Hello. This meeting of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors is called to order. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Ms. Bomke?
Here.
Mr. Cavalier?
Here.
Mrs. Mauer?
Here.
Mr. Milde?
Here.
Ms. Sellers?
Here.
Mr. Snellings?
Here.
Mr. Thomas?
Here.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Wonderful. I think our first item on the agenda is Dr. Benson. Oh, of course, it's not on my new agenda. Let me talk about that for one minute. I'd like to welcome Jonathan Reynolds and his parents, John and Christina Reynolds. Jonathan is a student at Virginia Tech and has attained the rank of Eagle Scout with the Boy Scouts. Jonathan, I ask that you and your parents please come and approach the dais. And Supervisor Meg Bomke is going to, the representative from your district, is going to do a special presentation for you. Hold on one second, we'll get you one. Are you going to talk about his STEM lab? Good.
So I'm honored today with Jonathan and his mother. I saw them at Leland Station the other day, and he's on his break from Virginia Tech. And they didn't have a county representative there, and I said, "Well, we'll recognize you Tuesday if we can. Let me call Paul Milde and see if he can add it to the agenda." So we did. And I want to let you know that Jonathan is studying, and this is a mouthful, environmental management and water resources policy and management. So it sounds like you'll have a job in stormwater management here in Stafford County when you graduate. So I just want to say, as we know, so many people have earned their Eagle Scouts Award, and you now join over 2.5 million men that have earned this award throughout the nation. And as we all know, Baylor University in Texas is a huge university on research. And I'd just like to read to you what they say about our scouts. And they say, "It's called 'Merrit Beyond the Badge,' found that Eagle Scouts are more likely than men who have never been to scouting to have high levels of planning and preparation skills, report family and friends, volunteer for religious and nonreligious organizations, donate money to charitable groups, and work with others to improve their communities." So now, on behalf of Stafford County, my colleagues here and all the citizens, we're all very proud that you reached your Award of Eagle. Congratulations. So this is a coin from Stafford County with our famous George Washington on the front. And this is a flag. And there's a certificate in here from me. And then also, we have Speaker of the House, Bill Howe, has a letter that he sent to you. And if I might just read it to you, and we'll have the original delivered to you at home. It said, "To Jonathan, it is my pleasure to send you my congratulations as you receive scouting's highest honor, the Award of Eagle Scout. I am well aware of the dedication, effort, and commitment necessary in obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout. Your efforts are admirable and worthy, not only from those within scouting, but from within the entire community. I am certain that you will remember this day for years to come and that your fine example and hard work will be remembered by all..." Can you say it for me? No. Exemplary, thank you. "Young man, in addition to honoring your generation with your willingness to serve, your character and leadership skills will continue to be assets to our society. Your love of God, country, and service to your fellow man are attributes that you must nurture and cherish as you grow older. I have no better than generous and dedicated spirit that you have shown to date. Best wishes to you, your family, your scout troop, and everyone that participated in your fine achievement." So from Speaker Bill Howe. Thank you. And now, I would like to mention that Jonathan's Eagle Scout project was actually participating in a STEM project over at Conway Elementary. And since he's taking some public speaking classes at Virginia Tech, he has now decided to test it on us. So here's Jonathan.
How fun. Okay, so STEM stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, and Mathematics. And there has been a recent push in elementary schools to get STEM labs up and rolling. And at Conway Elementary, they had a STEM lab that was there, and they had some materials put together for it, but they didn't exactly have it organized or in any manner to start functioning. So when I got there, there was just a mess of materials laying on the ground. And they had me come in, and with my team, I counted all these items, these many, many items that they had laying across the ground. And we took them, we categorized them, we cataloged them, and we sorted them and put them away, as well as built an organization container that they now keep in the classroom. And to my knowledge, that classroom is still up and running and organized as it was.
Thank you Supervisor Bomke and Jonathan. One thing I'll mention before we go into the Schools Report, Superintendent Benson, is that it's the eighth anniversary of Stafford Hospital. They've had a huge impact on our lives here in Stafford. If you can remember when we didn't have them here, providing services locally and a lot of events they sponsor and encouraging fitness and such. And we appreciate them. But I also like, my favorite statistic from the hospital that I wanted to squeeze in here was that we had 1,100 babies born there last year in the new hospital. And they're complete capacity. I mean, they're using all their space that they originally built. In the beginning, they had only had about 70% of the rooms open. But they're using the whole hospital, and we're churning out kids. I don't know how long it's been since kids were getting God's eye on them. Since kids were being born in Stafford. So we're very grateful for Stafford Hospital. Dr. Benson, are you ready to? On that note?
And I could follow the Stafford Hospital thing, I guess. Stafford Hospital has their 5K coming up on April 8th, yes. Mr. Snellings reminded me of it a little bit ago. And so we've been working on getting some school representation. Love to see some representation from local government out there as well. And Jonathan, I guess Jonathan had to leave, but I was going to say, if that stormwater management thing doesn't work out, I'm pretty sure we could find a job teaching for him, if that's something that he's interested in. So really, kind of getting into the thick of our budget efforts, we were hopeful that the School Board would be in a position to adopt a funding request to bring to the supervisors last week, but we didn't get our state spreadsheets until about 30 minutes before our work session. And there's some additional revenue in there. So we have a work session scheduled for tonight at 6:30 and a special call meeting following that to take a look at those adjustments and how that might impact compensation for employees on the School Division side. And in that vein, I shared with you some additional information. I've talked to you on a number of occasions about our focus on total rewards, and that we believe that compensation is certainly part of being an attractive workplace. But benefits is another part of that, as well as work-life and wanting to feel like you're contributing and have an opportunity to influence what's going on in the workplace. And it's kind of that whole package thing. But I have some, there's some numbers in a chart in the materials that I distributed to you this afternoon that I just wanted to bring to your attention. On occasion, we have folks talk about people that might be leaving our organization to go points north or to move to a division that might be compensating at a higher level. We've made some significant improvement in our teacher compensation in the last couple of years. The second page, or maybe it's the third page of the document that I've given you, shows our teacher salary, our base salary. This is a bachelor's degree. And we're the, where are we on here? We're the dark blue triangle, okay? And you can see that we've made some significant progress. Two years ago, we were below all of these school divisions at the entry level, significantly below. And so using a scale enhancement model that's based upon a market analysis, we've been able to give differential raises based upon how far out-of-market people have been. And we have significantly improved our position there. You can also see, the longer that folks are with us, actually the more competitive our compensation is compared to other divisions. We also do exit surveys. And yes, our percentages, from my perspective, are a little bit high in terms of folks that are leading us. But we're seeing some improvement in that area as well. And that's highlighted in the second to the last paragraph on the second page. And FY '15, we had 14% of our teachers exited the system compared to 13%. And FY '16, a bigger improvement for our service employees as well as our administrators. We have about 1,800 teachers in the division, not all assigned to classroom spaces. Anybody that's on a teacher contract would be included in that number. So guidance counselors, math specialists, anybody that's on a teacher contract. So what we're talking about here is somewhere in the neighborhood of about 270 teachers in the last couple of years that have left us during the summer. The other thing I'd like to point out, though, that if you, we do do exit surveys. So we collect information from folks that are leaving as to why they're leaving us. And that our exit survey indicates for both FY '15 and '16 that only about 3% of those that left us left for economic reasons. 10% went to northern school divisions in 2015 as compared to 7.5% in FY 2016. So again, I think we're improving in that area. And I know personally, having talked to some teachers that have returned to us, that they've returned from points north. So and also an encouraging sign. Ms. Hazard, I don't know if you have anything you'd like to add to that as we move into this additional work that the Board will be doing this evening at our work session.
Please.
This model that we focus on, you mostly hear about it in our teacher area. However, the other area, last year, we incorporated into our budget, and it was with our maintenance and technical staff. It's a very similar model. So we spoke, we took that area of our staff. This year, the Board, in their budget priorities, as well as the work we've done to date, are focusing on our bus drivers and monitors, our paraprofessionals and our nurses. Very similar model being used. So those are the three areas that we are looking at this year. Can't give you exactly what we're doing. We will be looking at that tonight, I expect. We will have an approved budget this evening. But last week, we really did get those sheets, 5 o'clock. We wanted to make sure that we ran through all the numbers with the revenue. So I just wanted to tell you, I think that this model is working. You have the evidence with regard to the teachers. We will share that information as we go forward. We had hoped, you know, a three-, four-year model to get us to what we thought was the median of the market. That does not mean that that's our end goal, that's a starting goal. The Board can always reevaluate. Is that really where we want to be in our market? But we did start there with our teacher model, as well as most of our other models. We will be getting there. So I just wanted to share with that, the teachers are just the first step.
Thank you. Question, Ms. Bomke?
So the bus driver that I spoke to today, that I just happened to run into, loves Stafford County, never leaving here. So for example, she has been with the division for 13 years as a bus driver. So I guess the question she asked me, and I said, "Well, that's, you know, with the School Board, will they be treated differently if they have, you know, years of experience versus somebody coming on brand new?"
So what we're recommending to the Board is that we move to a pay banding model for our drivers. And so there will be some differentiation based upon years of experience. And then also move to a merit pay model such that folks can improve their compensation based upon their evaluation. We've also implemented an attendance incentive. We've had a challenge with folks calling out and having to find substitute drivers and resulting in double runs at our schools and our young people getting home too late, where folks, bus drivers can get an additional $10 per day for every day in the month if they don't call out during the course of the month. So they're able to increase their hourly rate by more than a dollar an hour if they take advantage of that. So we're taking kind of a multi-pronged approach to improving compensation in general for our drivers. We also know, though, that the entry level of our scale is further out of market than other portions of the scale. And it will take a differential adjustment in order to correct that.
Yeah, that was the term she used, and I wasn't familiar with it, was the pay banding. So, okay, thank you, that's very helpful.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Thomas? This chart actually is very interesting. But I think one of the things that you could produce with the data you already have, I'll use Stafford and Spotsylvania as an example. If you add the delta for every year, for a 30-year career, you'll find that a teacher who started in Spotsylvania, a teacher who started here, will make about $100,000 more over their career. I think it would be really neat if you could somehow make a version two of this chart and kind of show the total career benefit of being a Stafford, because we are a little bit behind in a couple of the first years. But if you make a career out of it, it's a significant number over 30 years in Stafford.
Ms. Sellers?
So a couple of weeks ago, I sat down with the Career Firefighters Union and I talked to them. We were seeing a big turnover with them as well. And so, you know, we talked about, obviously, the pay, the salary. They said that the northern counties do something else with their scales. One of them was a VRS multiplier. I have a whole list of things they mentioned that are attracting some of them up north. So I was wondering if you guys have looked at that, is that impacting the teachers as well? Are they doing some of these retention bonuses or some of these VRS?
Prince William does have an incentive related to saving for retirement, you know, beyond VRS. But we've not talked about implementing anything similar here. It certainly could, right? And again, it's that total package, looking at the combination of benefits and compensation that we have that makes us attractive. And again, we don't want to sell short work-life. And I think there are really positive things about working here in Stafford County that folks to the point, to north of us, might have a, might be challenged with bringing something that would be of the same magnitude.
Well, and speaking to work-life, so on Facebook, a couple of weeks ago, a bus driver posted about getting hit, a hit-and-run, and there's not cameras. I guess they have the new technology where they can have cameras on the sides of the buses, and they can see some of those hit-and-runs. Have we looked at doing any of that in this county?
I'm not sure what external cameras we have access to. I mean, we have cameras on all of our buses to monitor activities. And a lot of times, we can see things that are going on outside of the bus as a result of that. I'm not sure about the out...
I'm going to forward you the email I got.
Sure, yeah, absolutely.
And then we can talk about kind of whatever the issue is. Because apparently that, again, perception versus reality. How many times are people getting hit? But can we look at whatever makes sense?
There's other information that we get to collect as a result of the GPS systems that we have on our buses, including travel time, where folks are, are they stopped, are they moving, when some of these things are happening. So there are other elements that might be helpful in an investigation.
Okay. That would be helpful, too. Because whenever you see it on Facebook, it takes on a mind of its own. So just want to know it's out there.
Mr. Thomas?
Just a quick minor thing, you mentioned the GPS. My kids have a new app, and it tells me when they complete a drive, how quick they went. Normally, so if they're with a teenage driver, you can alert them that their friend's driving too fast. But I happen to get them when they get off the school bus. And for three and a half months now, the school bus drivers are under the speed limit. So I just thought I'd pass that along to you that...
Wow.
Especially out there on Route 3, it's kind of wide open, and you kind of wonder why it's only 55. But they do drive the speed limit, so I just thought I'd send that feedback to you.
Any other questions or comments? Well, we're looking forward to your budget request. Thank you, Mr. Milde, thank you. And next, Martha Hutsel, my good friend and fellow Rotarian from Central Rapid Hennick Regional Library Services.
Thank you. Yes, I am Martha Hutsel. This is Rebecca Purdy, the Deputy Director at Central Rapid Hennick Regional Library. And can we have the floor computers or the computers, please?
Are you seeing it?
Yep, we're seeing it, if you guys are seeing it. It doesn't feel like you can hear me. Can you hear me in this?
Yes.
Okay, great. First, I want to thank the supervisors who were able to help us at England Run on Saturday with our Dr. Seuss. The pictures were gorgeous. We had over 200 people come, so it's a great family event. The main reason that we came today is because we want to let you know basically where your money goes. You are wonderful supporters of the regional library system. And it's a good idea for us to come out and tell you a couple of times a year what we do for the community's well-being and development. We have a newly revised mission statement, which is to inspire lifelong learning for everyone in the community. And we gear that to all ages, from infants to people in their 90s who still come into the library. I am not going to read every bullet point to you, but of course, our main mission is literacy and education. We have 13 Grow Reader early literacy classes a week in Stafford County. Those are what used to be called Storytime. Childcare providers can earn CEUs at our free biannual early literacy training. We have, of course, summer reading. We have free test proctoring. Cafe Book is a program that we probably need to explain a little bit. It's a middle school reading program, and we are in all of your middle schools. And that's more than in Spotsylvania. We have a couple of middle schools out there that we have not been able to get into. But Stafford County has participated with us. So we provide the staff and the books, and the kids come to the school library during their lunchtime. And they basically have a book talk, a book group, that's just for those kids who participate, those who are interested in books. The image on the screen there, I hope that you can read the person's handwriting. I love the library because we use it a lot to homeschool. Virginia has a lot of homeschoolers, and particularly in this area, for a wide variety of reasons. And they do use the library very heavily, not just in Stafford County. Workforce development is another big part of our mission. You wouldn't think that that would happen at the library, but it has happened at libraries for decades and decades. Almost all job applications and resumes today have to be done online. Everyone doesn't know how to do that, and everyone doesn't have a computer at home or a printer at home or internet access at home. So they come to the library for that. We spend a great deal of time helping people one-on-one. We have a job help center at England Run branch that we partner with Rapid Hennick Goodwill Industries. And we do help people find jobs. And people absolutely do find jobs by coming to the library to do that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I don't want to put you on the spot, but I get this report quarterly at the library. And in a community like Stafford, we kind of assume everybody has a computer at home. But it's in the thousands of people that actually come to the library, just in Stafford, not the whole... You happen to have that number...
This region has close to 25% of people who do not have internet access at home. They may have a computer, but they don't have the means to pay for the internet access. So we do a lot of that. We recently purchased a database called Lynda.com. It's online career development courses. It's video training, and you can learn to do everything from play a computer to, I'm sorry, play a guitar or HTML. You can also get a printed certificate that you can give to your employer that says, "I took a six-hour, an eight-hour, a 10-hour computer coding course, and this is how I did it." It's a very, very popular database, and we've gotten a lot of really great feedback from people. There are individuals who've been paying for this on their own and subscribe to it at home because they have the means. But we have provided it to them, so thank you for that. Like Jonathan and like the schools, we have STEM classes and Maker Labs. We partner with UMW, Dr. George Meadows. England Run and Porter both have fantastic Maker Labs. We actually turned a storage closet at Porter into a Maker Lab. And your fantastic John Kindred was very instrumental in helping us do that. So we got rid of stuff we didn't need, and we turned it into something that we did need. Uniquely Stafford is an art show. We have Uniquely Fredericksburg, Uniquely Spotsylvania. This is a place where people can actually show and sell their artwork. We have art shows constantly. We do not charge those artists. It's an opportunity for them to sell their work. It's income for them, and this one is absolutely fantastic. We're gearing up for our annual Core Con, which is a comic book convention at England Run. That picture was taken at England Run. We usually have 1,400 to 1,600 people come. It's a very popular family event, and so we'll have it again in May. Because England Run has a gorgeous fireplace, we have concerts in front of the fireplace. And all of these things, of course, are just open to the public. We don't take sign-up, we don't charge fees. I did want to let you know, someone mentioned earlier the event we had on Saturday. We don't have a room big enough to hold the likes of Margot Lee Shutterly and all of her fans. She wrote the book Hidden Figures, which the movie is based on. We had 1,551 people inside that building. They were lined up on the sides, across the back, and on the other side, and the balcony was full and the foyer was full. We had it at Todd Auditorium, thank goodness. And we turned away almost 200 people. So it was a fantastic event. I'm so sorry. I wish that you had my phone number, I would have let you come on in and squeeze a spot on the side. The UMW police were getting a little bit nervous. She signed books for almost two hours, and the line went all the way out the door, down the sidewalk, and over to the bell tower. And it was cold. We moved them inside. So that's just one of the wonderful things that we do. It was a fantastic event. We've never had anything that big or that positive. So wide variety of people who came to it, so that was wonderful. Lots of kids and teens. We've also had quite a few people tell us that they come into the library, they use their laptop and our Wi-Fi, and they complete their degrees, their college degrees online, or their high school GEDs. So that's another service that we love to offer to people. They use our small group study rooms at England Run and Porter. We have a fantastic service called Lobby Stubs, where we go out to the senior communities, and we deliver books, and we help them learn how to use today's technologies for whatever it is that they want to learn. So we answer reference questions to them. Meeting spaces, you can see, 90,000 people. 90,100 people attended meetings in the first and second quarters of FY '17. And of those, 43,000 were at Porter and England Run. So the meeting rooms are very popular. We have community gardens, we have community events. You can see the description of those. The North Stafford Rotary Club is actually the one that put up that garden there at Porter about four or five years ago, and it was done by an Eagle Scout. So we worked with master gardeners, Eagle Scouts, and Rotary. And the food goes to the Sur Food Pantry. Additional impacts on Stafford County, tax preparation, summer meal programs, and all of the other partnerships that we have, particularly with your Parks and Rec Department. People don't think that these are the things that happen in libraries today, but these are the things that happen in libraries today. This is what people want. This is why they use it as a community resource, and this is why we value your support so heavily. The food program is through United Methodist Church Girl Scouts, and they basically collect food and give it to people in grocery bags at England Run on Saturdays in the summer for those families that qualify. The text there says, "It's hard being a single dad and not having internet or computer services at home." So I'm grateful for this library's transformation that allows me to access, allows me access to both. Thank you, XOXO. So we have a program called Libraries Transform. We are in the middle of moving the admin staff out of the headquarters facility that's on the third floor. We are moving to what we have called the Library Service Center, which is off of Lafayette Boulevard. We are moving into a renovated warehouse space. The owner of that is paying for all of the renovations himself. And we will turn that third floor into public space. We've rented from him for a long time. He's very fond of the library. So we will turn that third floor into public space, particularly group study rooms. And the adult fiction will come off of the second floor where we have the children and teens books. We've had some complaints about that, so we're moving those books. The only other thing, particular slide. We have received approval from the city's ARB to demolish the two old buildings that are next to the city's park, the library's parking lot. So we will have 22 additional parking spaces. Someone bought one of those buildings and gave it to the library. It will be demolished very soon, I hope. The other is on the market for removal or demolish. So we will have more parking downtown.
And that's not out of the library budget, just to be clear, right?
Correct.
The city's paying for that.
Correct, right, correct. The city is paying for that. Just a quick note, in fiscal year '08, the city's budget was over $1.2 million. It is now $783,000. So we are asking for an increase there if we possibly can. It is an increase of 3.36% for that book budget and an overall increase of just 3.15% in the budget overall. We are trying to build that book budget back up. This picture was taken at Porter Library in the former closet, which is now a Maker Lab, former storage closet. And you can read the text that the woman has there. And that's part of the partnership we have with the American Library Association. It's a free partnership. It's a program that they are promoting nationwide called Libraries Transform. It's just another way that we impact people's lives in the community. The other slide is taken at England Run. That is in the children's, we've called it a beehive for years. It's a big play area and literacy area. I value the library because it's a fun environment for children to relearn, play, and make friends. So that is just something we wanted to point out to you. Those are all the slides we have. If anyone has any questions, we're happy to answer them. But I'm here to tell you that you have a fantastic library system. You really do, and people value it very highly.
Does anybody have any questions? Thank you very much for what you do for the community and for coming today.
I appreciate it. Thanks for listening.
Our pleasure. That brings us to our presentations by the public. If anyone wishes to address the Board, this will be your opportunity to do so. There are, I have one speaker card, and that will be you, Mr. Johnson. But I'll explain the rules to those who may not be familiar. You'll have a green light with three minutes. The green light comes on once you state your name and address. you state your name and address. You'll have three minutes. At the yellow light, you're down to one minute. At the red light, you should be finished speaking. And with that, Mr. Johnson?
Good afternoon. I know you all miss me. That's why I just had to come back. I'm really glad to hear that you're actually looking into coal ash. Just to the north of us is a time bomb. The Possum Point Dominion site has unbelievable amounts of coal ash in it. Coal ash, and I have a handout, which I can give to anyone who's interested, but there was a report that was put out by five environmental groups, actually six environmental groups, including the Sierra Club, of which I am associated with the Rappahannock Group. And basically, the report talks about why coal ash is so toxic. And it basically talks about the ingredients in coal ash. Arsenic, mercury, selenium, lead, cadmium, boron, bromides, nitrogen, phosphorus. I have here a handout that the Department of Environmental Quality gave back in February when they had the public hearing on coal ash up there. It was actually a pretty interesting session. There were a lot of really, really angry people. One of the people, for example, lived right next door to the big coal ash pond that had overflowed and completely covered every bit of his land with the toxic ash. Dominion has since agreed to pay for water hookups for all the people that live there because, in fact, their water has been basically destroyed. It's undrinkable. The reason it's important to us in Stafford is, A, it's underground water and it could flow in this direction, and B, it's dumping stuff into Quantico Creek, which goes down to the bay. That flows right by our shores. So, I think in 15, in 2015, Dominion actually dumped 22 million or more gallons of toxic water into Quantico Creek with no permission. They illegally dumped it, then they denied that they dumped it, and only when the Potomac River Keepers actually had pictures to show that they had done it, did they admit that they actually did do that. They dumped it right where a breeding ground for the Atlantic sturgeon is. It's also a really big breeding ground right there for a type of catfish, commercially fished in that area. So what they're doing, by leaving it there, you have to understand, it's been in five different ponds, none of which are lined. So any water that goes into it soaks down into the ground. They want to leave it there. They want to take it all and put it in one, right next to the creek. So, for those of you who actually believe in climate change, the waters are rising. And with the waters rising, we're going to have more issues of flooding. We're going to have worse storms. We're going to have all that. So, what I would like you to think about is, what's the impact to us as Stafford residents on having?
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Oh, I still got a few seconds. Oh, no, it's red. Anyway, I just want to say thank you. I'm really happy that you're positively taking a look at this. And even if you don't believe in climate change, this is a really bad thing. We need to take care of it.
Thank you. It's good to see you again.
Thank you. Does anybody want any copies of this? I will, yeah, throw a copy to the board. Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to address the board? Please come around.
Yes, I'm Glenn Trummer, 65 Marlborough Point Road in Stafford. And I really just wanted to point out some of the great work that some of the staff has been doing lately to help out the Civil War Park. The GIS section is one of those, it's kind of in the back and it doesn't get noticed very often, but I'll tell you, there are really great people in there. And we just, I gave each one of you a copy of this map. And this was produced by EB, or Elizabeth Davis, if you know her. And let me tell you, she came out with the whiz-bang Super GIS machine. This map right here is exactly correct. Every point on this map is within 10 feet of when we walked the trails out there. The color coding, we've redone it multiple times. The last one due to make sure that people that were colorblind didn't have problems with this map. We've had so many people out at the park have asked for a trails map, and now we have one, and it couldn't be better. And I also wanted to say that in getting this thing done and printed out, that Lisa Logan and, in particular, Courtney Brahman really did a great job in helping out. So, I sincerely appreciate everything that this board does and has done for the park. And I really appreciate the people that hit the ground like EB did and spent all that time to do something. And it's really paying off for people in the county. So, thank you all.
Mr. Chairman, we're going to break protocol. Mrs. Mauer, I'd like to ask you a question.
Sure.
So, on this map, where is the pavilion that's on our consent agenda?
Well, the pavilion will be there when the pavilion's built.
But where would it go?
It's in the picnic area. It's going to be up on the hill there. There's plenty of room for it. We've already looked.
Next to the orientation sign?
Uh, next to the, where you see the picnic table right there, not next to it, but on that, that's a hill if you're looking at. You look in the center of the map, right by the big parking area there.
Okay. Yes, thank you.
And that's where it'll be.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for everything you've done for the county, for saving us millions of dollars, and for continuing to save us money in the signs on the highway and everything else. As a volunteer, appreciate it.
Well, I appreciate that, but without everything y'all have done, this wouldn't have been possible. So, likewise. Thank you.
Would anyone else in the chamber like to address the board? All right, we'll close the public hearings and bring it back to committee reports by board members.
Mr. Cavallier?
Couple of quick updates here. Since the last board meeting, which was on 21st, I attended an Quay Harbor Property Owners Board of Directors meeting along with Mr. Milde, a Quantico Innovation Center Board meeting, a meeting on a proposed data center in the Wildwater area, and a few other things. So, that pretty much wraps up my visits. But I do want to mention that one other thing that I'd like to bring up. It seems like the developers at Embry Mill made a mistake in their projection of the opening of Embry Mill Road. They told us last month that it was going to be April/May timeframe. Then we just got a revision that it's 18 months from now. So, that has a serious impact on a lot of things and the number of homes that they can sell and whatnot. So, in the end, it may be doing us a favor for our growth rate. But I think I also made a mistake whenever I voted for the reduction in the lot size from 50 to 40 feet for their homes, because they said it was good for their marketability. And so, I would like to see us revise that and have that, Mr. Chairman, placed under consideration for an upcoming board meeting to go back to the original ordinance that we had prior to the change on the lot width size.
A regular board meeting?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mr. Foley?
And that concludes my report.
Mrs. Mauer?
All right. Well, first, I want to thank Windsor Forest for inviting me to their annual Homeowners Association meeting. It was great to meet all of those residents outside of a campaign year. And I also want to thank the Rock Hill Volunteer Fire Department for attending that meeting with me and providing them additional information on fire safety, considering that they're in a rural, no public water area. Also met with the folks on Lynnhaven Lane and want to thank Keith Dayton for his diligence in providing them options. Will probably be coming to this board eventually with another request for a service district. I believe very strongly in pulling yourself up by your bootstraps, and they want their road paved and are willing to pay extra taxes in order to get it. We had our final legislative committee meeting for the session. Our lobbyists will be making a presentation before our board, wrapping up what happened during the legislative session. I also want to thank Delegate Dudenhaffer for taking the lead in killing a bill that would have had serious impacts here in Stafford County. It came up at the last minute, was moving like a freight train, had passed overwhelmingly in the Senate. And this was related to how we charge our availability fees. And it would have had devastating impacts here in Stafford, and so I appreciate his diligence in getting the rest of the delegation, the Stafford delegation, in going ahead and getting that bill to fail narrowly, mind you. Also had a great time reading Dr. Seuss books at the Embry Mill Library, at the England Run Library, and also with Rock Hill Elementary School. Happy birthday to Dr. Seuss, and those classics will never go out of style. So really appreciate the invitation from your staff. And I've got a whole new rendition for "Mr. Brown Can Move, Can You?" So, I want to congratulate my constituent, General Christmas, and Supervisor Snellings over here, the rest of the Memorial Commission, and all of our staff for a fantastic ribbon cutting, or groundbreaking for our Veterans Memorial. This is a true testament to the power of our community here in Stafford County. They raised those funds with a lot of prodding from General Christmas and the rest of the commission. And I just want to report, Mr. Snellings, that I did submit my brick and my check. So, my form is in, celebrating my husband's 20 years of service in the Marine Corps. And I encourage the large veteran population that we have here in Stafford County to also buy a brick. They're $200 and on our website. Finally, I attended several redistricting meetings that have been hosted by the school board. And I feel for the school board. They're making a very tough decision, and I truly appreciate the time that you have spent getting input from the community. You all have had private meetings within your own districts. You've had public meetings with the districts at large. And it's not an easy decision, and I truly do feel for you. There's some of the best things I've seen at the redistricting. One would be little Michael Arner. He's not so little. He's an eighth grader from Rodney Thompson Elementary School, and he was quite eloquent in pleading his case before the school board, and I was incredibly impressed by him. But another item, as Mr. Cavallier had mentioned, that was also brought before the school board during this redistricting meeting, is Embry Mill's sudden decision to not open Embry Mill Road. And we had been told up until a month ago that it was going to be open in April or May timeframe. And now, due to, as an email said, marketing decisions, it won't be open for another 18 months. And so this has generated a few, it could be just coincidence, but it has generated a few questions for me, Mr. Foley. Number one, that road has to be opened before the 500th building permit is issued. And when I checked with our planning staff, it appears that 448 building permits have either been issued or in the planning process. So we're getting really close, and they've been, due to rapid sales out there, they've been building at quite the clip. And so, I would like a briefing before the board, as a relatively new supervisor, on how we monitor the fulfillment of proffers and what is our process to ensuring that these proffers are met prior to us accidentally, you know, issuing additional building permits. So if I could get some additional information, I would really appreciate that. And that concludes my board comments. Thank you.
Ms. Sellers?
Thank you, ma'am. First, I held the commuter lot public meeting with a group of folks asking for the signs. I sent the board an email. And after sitting down with them, they did put a lot of research into it. What they're asking is not to change the patterns, as VDOT's done in the past. But they're actually asking for signs to memorialize the current pattern, so more people and new people can use the lot. And then over in the, what we refer to in the commuter community as the McDonald's Lot, the one over by Lowe's, they'd like to have a sign for the DC line as well. Currently, it's one big line. They'd like to separate the two. They feel that that would allow. So, as I sent my email to the board, I do support this, and I think it would be worth our time and consideration. They've put a lot of background into it. And thank the staff for taking the time to come and meet with those folks. I, too, attended the groundbreaking. I thought it was an excellent service. And General Christmas is fantastic. All the Marines that came out, the schools, North Stafford particularly, for obvious reasons, coming out. But I thought it was a great ceremony. And thanks to the folks who volunteered their time, but really to the staff who came out on a cold Saturday. Thank you, guys, for taking your time and coming out and making sure it was a great ceremony. Attended the tech park. The big issue on the tech park, if you guys haven't heard, is there's some office space that Silver has been donating, or through an in-kind donation, to the EDA that the tech park would like to rent out. And so there's been some discussion amongst the tech park, and we've been asked to take it to the county attorney about whether this is something they can do. Essentially, it would be a pass-through, so the EDA would allow the tech park to do this, and the tech park would accept the money as part of, as a revenue source. So that's been some discussions on the tech park board. Also attended GWRC and FAMPO. FAMPO, it's no secret, we're still in the same place. None of our SmartScale applications did very well. So we're talking about some things, accessibility, some of the definitions that we've been talking about since I got on FAMPO. What are these algorithms? What do they mean? And are they going to hurt us or help us? And right now, we believe they're hurting us. So we're trying to advocate to Richmond and to the CTV to change some of that. GWRC also met, and one interesting thing that came out of GWRC is looking at, they're calling it a food table, and looking at where we're getting our food, growing our food, or producing our food. So they'd like to do a study similar to what the Rapidan area did, which is Faulkhear County. Very interesting concept. I'm going to sit down with the ladies who brought that to us and see kind of what it is, and see if it's something we'd be interested in. I have had conversations with Dominion. We're going to have another phone call tomorrow to talk about what this coal ash is. It does impact folks' drinking waters. It does have potential impacts. So it is something that I have taken an interest in. I don't know where it's going to go. We were told that the supervisors in Prince William had taken a vote on this. They have not. Today was their work session. It's my understanding they may take a vote on it today, but we don't know. We'll find out. But I am monitoring what Prince William County is doing. I'm speaking to the folks in Prince William County, as well as Dominion, and trying to get a handle on what's going on there. Finally, with the redistricting meetings, I have attended those as well and hosted some of my own. It's a very passionate topic, and I think what's been interesting from my perspective is to see the community unite. It's not the, you know, and you're always going to have the, "These test scores aren't as good as those test scores. Don't put my kid there." But what's happened is you're starting to see communities come together and say, "Why am I feeling this way? We're all Stafford County and all of our schools should be the same, and they should all have good test scores." And so folks in the community are starting to ask some good questions. In regards to the street in Embry Mill, Newland, I think, would be happy to talk about this, but there is a difference between opening a street up to the public and accepting a street into the state system. A school bus cannot go on a street that's not in the state system, and that's probably more two years out than anything. So I think as long as we're talking about the same things here, whether it's open to the public or not, doesn't mean that it's going to be accessible to a bus and to people. So, it is probably two to four years out being accepted in the state system. But they could possibly open it sooner, although I'm going to tell you, having those folks come off of using cut-through, I would love to see them keep it closed as long as they possibly can to keep those cars out of the neighborhoods. But that's just me, and somebody who lives in Embry Mill. We'd rather not see the cars racing down mine road. Thank you.
Mr. Snellings?
Thank you very much. I just want to echo what everyone else is saying. Thank everyone for being at the Armed Services Memorial Ribbon Cutting Saturday. About 200 people in a very cold atmosphere. And I get cold easy, and I kept putting clothes on. I couldn't get enough on, but I survived it. Very emotional thing for a lot of people. But I want to encourage everybody to go to our website and buy a brick. It is something you can do for a loved one, or a family member, or a friend, or whoever, whether they're serving the service now, or they've been in the service, that will live in perpetuity. It will be there for the end of time, because it's going to be maintained. And there's not too many places that you can put a loved one's name that's going to be maintained like that. So I encourage you to go to our website. There's a link right at the bottom. It shows you how to do it. It's very easy. It's $200 and it's tax deductible. And believe me, you'll feel good about it. We're going to have the ribbon cutting on July the 15th. I hope you circle that. That is going to be a very big event. I believe the Marine Corps Band is going to be here. A lot of different organizations. I believe the Marine Corps Band is going to be here, a lot of different organizations, a lot of different dignitaries, and I hope very few speeches. So it's something I hope, I think you're going to be so pleased when you see this memorial. It's going to cover one acre, an entire acre of ground. That's a huge memorial. And the outpouring from the community has just been great. I just want to commend our IT staff on our new webpage. I mean, if you haven't been on that webpage, it's wonderful. You can just zip right through it. Even somebody like me that knows about as much about computers as I do about fixing an airplane engine, I can zip right through it. Been a lot of talk in the last few weeks about Embry Mill, not in my district. But I want to remind everyone, Embry Mill was approved by this board on March the 6th, 2001, 16 years ago yesterday. It's been sitting on the books for 16 years. And under Virginia law, no subsequent board can change that. So when everybody sees the 500 homes, the 600 homes going up, keep that in mind. This board had absolutely nothing to do with the approval. The last thing is be careful of the weather because Facebook says we're going to have a storm, and I believe everything on Facebook. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Snellings.
Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We had a community and economic development meeting today. Several items were discussed and will be coming before the board for action. One was the Bay Consortium and Workplace Innovation Opportunity Act. It's been kind of reorganized, and the board will be asked to sign on to the charter for that. And it was recommended that the board do so. We heard an update from the Process Review Committee. This is composed of Mrs. Baumke and Mr. Snellings, looking at how we can improve our process in the planning and zoning and development department and become a little bit more customer-friendly. I was very pleased to see that there was several, not just a handful, several actionable steps that could be taken. Some can be taken by staff in-house, and some are some items maybe the planning commission hopefully will be helping us with. And then they even have some lower priority items that we can maybe tackle next year. So good job to the committee for that. And you'll be seeing some action steps coming to the board. We get a periodic update on the pump and haul system. As you recall, we are trying to eliminate that because it's a subsidy to certain properties that have pump and haul. And we found out today that after a little bit of engineering, we have found five more properties that can actually be served by an alternative system. So that's very good news. We had an item come up again on the discussion of the way we calculate our availability fees for apartments. There was a lively discussion, of course, and we discussed this two years ago, last year, as well as this year. And there was a motion to have the Utilities Commission maybe look into it further, but that motion failed. And the committee itself left the item on the table without a recommendation. I believe Ms. Sellers is going to bring it to the full board for future. But just to give you an idea of the scale of the project, or scale of the changes, if we make the availability fee change calculation that the developers requesting, it's around a $950,000 delta. So it's a pretty big price tag that comes with it, and I'm sure there will be a little more lively discussion as that comes to the board. We also discussed about possible changes to the TDR receiving area. When we passed TDR a couple of years ago, there was a big fear from the community that all the developers would rush in with TDR applications and they would take advantage of the system. We've had zero applications. So quite the opposite has occurred. So we're looking to expand the receiving area just a little bit further down Route 1. So that has to come to the board, and we'll send it to the planning commission. The current proposal would not change the sending area at all, just expand the receiving area a little bit. And the final thing was, we passed the Falmouth Redevelopment Overlay District a couple months ago. And the planning commission has found a couple more uses, such as adult business, boat sales possibly, nightclub, that are currently permitted by CUP. And they've asked if they could take a second look at that and possibly just prohibit those uses altogether. And the committee thought that was a good idea. So that'll be coming to the board for a hopeful send down to the planning commission. That's my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Ms. Baumke.
Yes. I just wanted to echo what some of my colleagues have said for me, being on the board for three years. This is my fourth year. Probably the most emotional thing and most important thing that I've done since we've been on the board was the groundbreaking for the Armed Services Memorial. It was a really special day, and I really can't thank the commission enough. I think it's important that we recognize General Christmas, who did a tremendous amount of fundraising, Dan Chishester, our former Commonwealth attorney, Gary Snellings, Billy Shelton, Mark Osborne, and Shannon Howe, who helped out with a lot of the staff help. And it was just a really special day for the Lamar family, who lost their son, Sergeant Don Lamar, seven years ago. And it's going to be a really special place for people to come and recognize and spend special time with the people that they love the most. So really, thank you for all those efforts. And the ribbon cutting is going to be July 15th. So make sure you plan your vacations around that. Along with Mrs. Mauer, I did do some reading for Dr. Seuss Week over at England Run Library. And I read Horton, Here's a Who. Woo! That was a long one. Green Eggs and Ham was already taken. Anyway, I also, we had a sign ordinance meeting that Ms. Sellers and I are on, and we're looking at all kinds of different things right now. We're looking at the square footage of multiple signs on a piece of property versus the number of signs. We're trying to define what is a temporary sign. Is it 60 days? Is it 90 days? And we might even be coming back to the drawing board and talking about prohibitive signs. But I think it's interesting, Susan Blackburn in zoning has actually reached out to a lot of other counties in the Commonwealth, and only Chesterfield is the only one that has a new sign ordinance. So that just tells you how complicated it is. The city of Fredericksburg is putting something before their city council coming here soon. They may have done it last week. And so we're looking at a lot of different things in our BZA, Planning Commission, and Mrs. Blackburn will be going to a meeting down in Richmond on sign ordinances. Our next meeting for that is April 13th. I also attended my first MAC meeting, which is Military Affairs Council. And I think it's really important for the community to know that the Military Affairs Council, as a subset of the Fredericksburg Chamber of Commerce, is no longer an entity. And there are discussions with the Chamber on how they're going to move forward based upon their mission and their goals, because, you know, they have to raise money, and their bandwidth of what they do is very different. And then the Military Affairs Council of all those people are going to figure out through their executive committee how they're going to be forward and what that's going to look like. So that's all I need to share on that front. We also had an infrastructure meeting today. The regional airport, we are in the process of still trying to figure out what our memorandum of understanding is going to be with them. We're redefining what is a ground lease, what are net revenues. They will be coming back to the drawing board at our next infrastructure meeting. And the other most interesting thing is we are going to be sending out an RFEI, which is Request for, how do you define it? Request for Expression of Interest, to use the, to look at our broadband services in the county for those areas that are not served at all or underserved. And we are going to ask for people in the community, and it may be a combination of different broadband companies, to come to us with ideas. We're not going to be entering into a contract, but we realize that we have a lot of people in the community that are not served. So we're going to go to the community and say, "How would you help us address this problem?" So that's going to be interesting, and we'll have more information on that at a later date. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Milde.
Thank you. I attended many of the events that you've heard mentioned, Property Owners Association inside of the harbor, The Quick at Quantico Corporate Center. I also attended a Fredericksburg Chamber of Commerce Transportation Committee meeting, which is a kind of a powerhouse of very interested people trying to move transportation solutions forward. And they were very instrumental, you may remember, in the successful application for the Atlantic Gateway, $165 million. And they're determined to get more than we've already gotten. I was at the FAMPO meeting with Meg Baumke and Laura Sellers. I think you were both there. Bob Thomas and I serve on PRTC. I was at that meeting last Thursday where we finally hired a new executive director to replace Al Harf, who's been gone a while. He's a great guy. He's very qualified, comes from a great system, has done very well, and he's a lot less expensive than Al was. But when Al had done his career, so we're getting, we think we're getting a value. And this morning, I attended the Fredericksburg Roundtable Breakfast at the Rouse Center, where I learned that we, the projections for enrollment there are still well past what we had hoped they would be. They've signed up over 4,000 people at the Jeff Rouse Center, which I think is pretty impressive. I want to mention that, just a clarification, once a road, Jeff, I'm kind of looking over to you, once a road is built to VDOT standards or a bridge, and we went through this with the Primer House, or whatever you call it.
Morton.
Morton Road. I don't think it takes another couple of years to get this road accepted into the system. I think it only takes several months. Am I wrong, Jeff? Can you shake your head or put your fingers up? Is that good?
Please.
I'm right. I am right. So whatever's going on at Embry Mill, I'm not privy to that. But if, once they get their act together, we can get that road open relatively quickly because we had to do it off of Forbes. We did. We've done it before. Anyway, we can talk about it later.
The bus game.
We have, so you already spoke, you already spoke about the Armed Services Memorial. It was amazing. You were, I think almost everyone was there. I want to mention that the official count, Gary, is over 300 people attended. Yeah. And you know, you played a huge part in that and Delegate Dudenheffer as well, correct? We didn't mention him, along with General, we're so lucky to have Ron Christmas, who is a veteran at this, at raising money. He's, of course, spearheaded and led the effort for the Marine Corps Museum and Heritage Center. And Dan Chishester spoke to the crowd. He's just a great orator, 40 years as a prosecutor, of course, but he's got a great sense of humor. Wouldn't want to be on the bad end of that. But he was, it was a great event. I, you know, you'd mentioned Donald Lamar II. He died fighting in Afghanistan when he was 23 years old in 2010. He left behind a three-year-old daughter and two brothers, and his, of course, his parents and his wife. His mom still drives a bus for Stafford County. I mean, they're really part of our community. And they were the ones that instigated the whole memorial. They came to the board in 2012 and asked us to, if we would consider doing something for all of the veterans and people who have served. And the board did it. And like I said, Gary, you guys stepped up and really took care of that. We had all three ROTCs out there doing their color guards, along with the American Legion Honor Guards. And so if you can imagine that. And then we had the Mountain View Choir that sang. And I mean, I've seen, we all see these things often, but this group was really impressive. There was a lot of wet, a lot of not so dry eyes after they sang. And then the conductor or the leader, Badita Keen, got up and sang some, you know, Star Spangled Banner or some other patriotic songs. It was just, it was an amazing event, and it's all available. You can watch it all, right, on our website. So I got to tell you, that was one of the neatest events I have ever attended, ever. So good job to everyone that worked on this. And I can't say I had much to do with it, but I've certainly enjoyed it. With that, I will turn it over to the county attorney.
I have no word at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Mr. Foley, our county administrator.
I will say that I am genuinely pleased to be before you presenting the 2018 proposed budget. A lot of that has to do with the fact that it's been five weeks, and this thing has been looming over me since I started. But I will say to you, I always actually enjoy this time of year because I think it's the time of year that the board has the opportunity to have the most influence on what we do for this county, what we do for our citizens, and the difference that you can make as we move forward. It also gives staff the clear direction that we need on your priorities and moving some things forward. I will suggest to you that today I will talk a little bit about the future and perhaps some challenges that we have that I will make some suggestions to you, might require a little bit of a different kind of engagement with the board at a different time of the year in preparation for annual budgets, which I typically am used to doing in the late fall. That's something we'll talk about in the future. But I bring it up to you because the theme that you see before you is continued progress with an eye to the future. And we're going to talk a little bit about that. Before I get started, though, I want to take a minute to acknowledge and thank my staff for the hard work that they put into putting this budget together, in addition to having a new county administrator to try to straighten out on all the things that are in our budget. And Jack, I'm sorry that I didn't know how much we had in the budget for the airport. I will tell you that I've got a great staff behind me that know the answers to that. And I just want to thank them by name. In addition to a new county administrator, you have a new budget director, a new deputy county administrator, and a vacant deputy county administrator, and a lot of folks in different roles. So really, a great team effort to get us to the point we're at today on this budget. I want to thank, in particular, Andrea Light, our new budget director, for her hard work and having to put up with me more than anybody else. But Kim and Donna in the budget office for their hard work in putting this together, Maria for her oversight of a lot of that operation with some challenging personal times that she had during this process. But also the support staff, Mike Smith, Shannon Howe, Donna Kraus, and always Wendy Mallow, to help keep this whole thing going. So I wanted to make sure to take a minute to thank those folks because you all know this is a grueling process, and getting to this day is a big, is a big deal. The theme that you see before you is particularly meaningful to me. Continued progress is something that I have to say, in the time that I've been county administrator and in my couple of months preparing for it, I have been so very impressed with the progress this county has made, the things that you all have done in the last several years, the things that have come to fruition over the course of the last year have really been significant and are making a real difference in this community in terms of quality of life. And I don't say that lightly. Very aggressive action, I've understood from staff, that in the last couple of years, we've done more capital projects, investments in this community than in recent history. So that's important. Let's take a quick look at some of the continued progress with the examples that you see before you. And I won't read all of them, but some important ones. The second, AAA bond rating, very significant. All the changes and improvements in new services at the Rouse Center and the Embry Mill Park to promote sports tourism, the adoption of an economic development strategic plan. And the list goes on. A few highlights, the retail attraction initiative and some of the results that have come about and that are underway that we'll realize before too long. The additions to the Brookpoint and Colonial Forge High Schools, adding 200 seats to each school, significant work. And key improvements to utilities and roads, which are going to set us up for some economic development and other improvements in the future. And then finally, and I'm sure there's a longer list we could add, but a few things that worth noting, the outstanding job by our utility staff in assuring clean water for our community, and some recognition that we've received for that. First, inclusive playground for county at Chichester Park. The awards that we've received for our budget and finance staff, the distinguished budget award and the financial reporting award are not insignificant. And I will say to you that I felt fortunate to have come here at a time where I could participate in the events over the weekend with the memorial. What a great experience that was, and makes you feel proud of, frankly, proud to be an American and that this county is such a part of honoring our veterans. I feel really good to be here as county administrator during this time. So all of these things really are significant in terms of the quality of life of this community and are important to celebrate. So as we reflect on the progress and accomplishments of the last couple of years, we should celebrate, even as we begin to look to the future in FY '18. As we shift our focus to the future, we will discuss that this proposed budget very much reflects those improvements through increases in debt service and other areas that we'll talk about in the budget. Some of these significant improvements have constrained new initiatives that we're able to put forward this year, though key changes that prepare us for the future are included as we look at FY '18. And we'll talk a little bit about some things that we'll need to consider as we go past FY '18. Some of the issues on the horizon that you see before you. past FY18. Some of the issues on the horizon that you see before you, this eye to the future, a new courthouse, talk about planning for a new high school, a real commitment to some significant policy changes and operational changes by working together closely with the schools. Purchase of Development Rights Program is an issue on your minds. I know the development of our targeted growth areas and investments that we'll need to make there to make our Economic Development Strategic Plan a reality. We have a public safety staffing plan. The implementation of that is something to continue to stay focused on. Transportation funding is a challenge. We talked about that at the retreat, and I know you all have discussed it many times before, and how we'll move forward aggressively with economic development. And you see that at the bottom of the page. Hopefully, it will help us to grow our tax base so that we don't have to think about the tax rate. I know that's not an interest in this community. So, economic development will be important. But these are all things on the horizon that are really important as we move forward as a county to provide the services that are important. These will take considerable effort in the year ahead to allow us to continue to make progress in the future. In particular, and perhaps unlike challenges in recent past, they will take focused, multi-year financial planning and some policy direction and engagement from this board about what's most important and how we'll move forward into that future. We'll discuss how the FY18 proposed budget moves us to that future, even as we look at FY18 and 19 and 20. Those are some key years. So, let's focus real quick on the budget. Like to hit some of the highlights of the budget overall. First of all, the, the foundation of our budget is the priorities that you all have established for the community, and they're listed right before you. And also, this budget is put together based on the principles of responsible and accountable government, things that have been a pillar for how we have moved forward in this county in the past. And we are in a strong financial position and hopefully positioned ourselves very well to get a third AAA bond rating from the last agency. But you see all those principles that we live there before you. Based on these goals and principles, let's take a look at the overall highlights of the proposed budget at the highest level. No tax increase. We do have some challenges in this budget in meeting continuing mandates and some of the obligations on the investments that we've made in quality of life, the things that we've talked about previously. It also includes some new investments in economic development, again, to try to build our tax base. This budget reflects a continued commitment to the board priorities in the areas of the school system, public safety, and service excellence. It does continue a focus on employee market competitiveness. We heard some of that mentioned by the superintendent about the challenges in this market with staff. And it includes an increase in commitment to the preservation of open space and growth management, some things that the board talked to us about during the retreat. We've tried to take some important steps forward. So, let's take a quick look at the overall budget. And we're looking here at a pie chart on all of our funds. This budget totals $544,245,000 roughly. That's all funds considered. As you look at the chart before you, about sixty, about 59 and a half percent is schools. The general fund is about 25 and a half, and utilities makes up about 11.6%. That's a total of 96% of all of our expenditures in those three areas. You can see a number of other special revenue funds and other things that we do also reflected. But it's important, I think, to take a, a quick look at the, the big picture of this. Obviously, we spend most of our money on services for our citizens through the general fund. So, we're going to focus on that for a minute. We have a work session on March 15th with the school board to talk about that roughly 60% of the budget. But let's shift gears and focus in.
Before you leave, I want to make sure I heard you.
Yes, sir.
What did you say the total pie was worth?
The total pie is $544,245,000.
Thank you.
Why is the School Nutrition Service Fund separated? Is there a reason it is?
The, this is a fund that I think, it funds itself with the revenues that come in. So, we tried to separate that from other school funds that rely on local dollars.
Okay. I just never noticed it before.
Mr. Snelling?
Yeah. This may be a, a new way of looking at this, but again, special revenue funds, obviously, our utility fund also generates its own revenues. There's no supplement from the general fund from local tax dollars.
Mr. Foley, real, real quick, Mr. Foley.
Yes, sir.
Is CSA and private day school included? Where is that included?
That is in the general fund.
That's in the general fund. So, that's going to run a little over $5 million this year?
That, that's correct, generally in that.
Have you ever thought about putting that over into the school side? Because that's where it's going.
We have roughly a $760,000 increase from the current adopted budget year to the proposed budget. And as you all are aware, and, and most other boards, this is one of the most, one of the highest growing areas. So, I think we need to have some discussion about that, Mr. Snelling, this year.
The reason I bring it up, in a second, Mr. Chairman, is that we're, we're continuously criticized for not providing, our percentage is going down. Well, I'm a firm believer you can't spend percentages. But if you look at everything that has been included, the schools, construction funds, nutrition services, school debt service, and the CSA, and put all of that in there, because that is private day school, that is educating children. So, I don't know how the rest of the board feels, but I think that needs to be included in the school operating money and shown to the public that way.
I have no problem with that. By the way, it's about a percent, obviously, so that gets you past the 60% mark.
Yeah, I did want to clarify that. It's about a percent that would add to that. All right, let's go.
Mr. Chairman, no, I would just, I would not, I don't want to see it in the school operating and grant. I would rather see it as its own separate category.
Sure.
I don't have a problem with that.
Just want to show it as a school item.
Ms. Chairman, I would say that, you know, with the growth of this area, I know you've had a lot of conversation. I think we need to have more in thinking about strategies for the future. So, that's very much on staff's mind, and we'll be prepared to talk with you some more about that.
We are planning a private day school meeting in the next week. So, just to let everybody know that.
Okay. Continue.
So, let's focus in on the general fund a bit more. The general fund revenue summary is before you. And as you can see, about 75% of our funds that come from local dollars are property taxes, either real estate or personal property. About 13.4% comes from revenues driven by the state of our economy. And that's particularly, or in particular, sales, meals, and hotel taxes. And we'll talk about that in a little bit more detail in just a moment. And then you can see intergovernmental at 5.5% and some of the other smaller amounts that come in, in terms of the total pie. So, let's take a look at how these are changing from the current adopted budget to the proposed budget on the next slide. As you look here, you'll see that our new revenues total, about $10.7 million. Real estate revenues are, that you see the, the increase there on the top line of about 4%. That reflects a 3% increase in new construction activity and assumes no change in the tax rate either in the calendar year 18 or after. As you know, the, the assessment on properties is between, is a calendar year rather than a fiscal year. But there are no tax increases proposed in that line in either of those years. Personal property revenue continues to show strong growth, as do these economic-driven taxes that I've mentioned before. And just to give you a quick insight on that, meals tax is projected to increase by 575,000 or 7.65%, pretty significant growth. Our hotel tax is up 177,000 or 28%. And then, sales tax, which is a much larger base, up by about $300,000 or 2.3% in total. Permit activity is strong. That's reflective of both residential and commercial business growth. This chart before you also reflects a reduction in the tax on merchants' capital, which we'll talk a little bit about in more detail as we go forward.
So, the meals tax, in other communities, they do something where part of the meals tax goes directly to the schools. Do we do that in Stafford County?
I, my understanding is that we do not dedicate that. I think that, what I'm familiar with is a number of localities have gone to the voters for approval in a referendum to establish the meals tax. And as a part of that, they have told the public that they would dedicate it to schools. That's not my understanding of the conditions under which it was approved here. Obviously, the board could do that by policy if you chose to. So, let's take a look at our general fund expenditures. Briefly, as you can see, the, the pie chart before you, schools in the general fund, and this is our transfer to the school fund from the general fund, at about 51 and a half percent. You can see public safety as the second largest part of the pie at 19.3%. And the third largest is our community development operation at 6 and 1/2. And you can see the other amounts there. Let's look at how expenditures are changing from the current fiscal year. Again, the similar chart to what you've seen before. We briefly discussed the highlights of these expenditures at the beginning of the presentation, and we'll further review the details of the highlights according to the board's priorities for the community here in the next few slides before we conclude the presentation. But I want to highlight a few things real quickly. Miscellaneous reflects an increase in debt service on the significant improvements we've made over the past few years to enhance the quality of life with new facilities. So, that's why that line is showing a significant increase. New investments in economic development are reflected in the increase you see in community development. Continuing mandates for the Children's Services Act or private day school are reflected in health and welfare, as you see that line going up about 7.6% or $1.1 million. And continued investments in our schools and public safety are reflected in those lines, which frankly appear more modest as a percentage because the dollars are, are very large in the first place. In addition, though we have, like to have made more progress in those areas, avoiding tax increases and meeting obligations and mandates made it more difficult in this proposed year to make more progress, although we think there's some good investments here that you, that you'll feel good about. Obviously, that's what this process is all about. So, let's shift to the board's priorities quickly and look at these expenditures a little bit more closely and tell you what we've proposed. First of all, if you could advance a slide, in terms of fiscal responsibility, as we take an eye to the future, one of the significant initiatives we've put in this budget is to not wait until the debt payment is due on a new courthouse to begin funding it. The courthouse, as it is currently projected, would add about $5.5 million to our debt service. It's important that we plan ahead for that impact. We expect also somewhere in the neighborhood of $1 million in operating increase. Obviously, that courthouse is not happening tomorrow, so we have an opportunity today to set aside some of our revenue growth to begin preparing for those debt service payments. So, this budget proposes that we do that set aside, if you will, in preparing for the future. This year, we're proposing a fairly modest start to that and about $200,000 set aside. We are going to actually ask that you approve the budget with a place that we put that money, so that we're prepared to dedicate that growth in revenue starting today and building up over the next several years, as you see before you. In the meantime, if we set $200,000 aside of growth in revenue, but we really don't need it for several years, that means that $200,000 is available to invest in some things in the meantime. It's one-time money, but the stream will continue year to year until we build up to help pay for that debt payment. So, the concept here is that we utilize that funding for some other needs. One thing that we are proposing specifically, which you all, we'll take a look at and decide whether you think it makes sense, is we spent a lot of time talking about county space. Even the new court is about county space, obviously. We're proposing that we take some of that money to do a long-range space study so that we can get ahead of any space changes that we need and, and hopefully have, have less of the questioning and so forth that we have, but do some advanced planning for that. So, we're, we're proposing that. It's a small item, but something that we were planning to do and proposing to do with this budget, with the money that's, that's set aside. But again, the important concept is here, beginning to plan for that future debt service. We're doing the same with another challenge that we have. Great news that we got a safer grant. It's going to pay for 16 firefighters. It is now. That money will phase out in a few years to the tune of about $1.1 million. So, this budget proposes that we set aside $366,000 of the revenue growth to begin preparing for the grant going away and us needing to pick up the cost of the personnel. In this case, the same concept applies, and the $366,000 in one-time money, we're planning to put towards one of the goals you talked about at the retreat, which was enhancing our Purchase of Development Rights program. So, we'll talk about that a little bit more in just a few minutes. Beyond these specific measures, this budget continues the financial stewardship. Through the items that you see before you, we are going to continue to push for the third AAA bond rating in, in our work in the year ahead. That means that we have to adhere strictly to these financial high-performance principles that you see before you. This budget fully funds our reserves, meets all of our debt limits, and addresses the things that you see before you. We're enhancing our cash capital contribution and making sure that we stay at the 3%. But this budget reflects a continuation of all of those things. It also continues to focus on efficiencies and improving our business operations. One example is we are establishing a vehicle replacement program with some new policies on when we replace vehicles and how we'll evaluate that. It has an increased focus on data-driven decision-making. One example is the work that we're going to need to do on the new high school and those projections. And some work will be coming forward to the board over the course of the next month. And again, fiscal stewardship requires that you look beyond a single year. And we have done some of that in the past, but the new challenges on the horizon require that we probably double up those efforts. So, that's planned in the year ahead as well as part of that principle. Let's talk about the priority of education. The proposed budget exceeds a superintendent's request. It supports enrollment growth, maintains our local per pupil spending, and continues that commitment to unified approach for compensation and benefits. It also helps to address the mandates that they're experiencing on the VRS contribution rate increases that they're seeing. It makes a continued commitment to a joint CIP, shared services, and what I mentioned before about planning for a new high school. And it provides the county share of the high school fire training program. We have put that in there as an option. If the board decides to do some other things, some of that money could be reallocated to other fire rescue needs. But we felt it was important enough to put forward.
$125,000 or the 200, how much is that?
50% at 125,000. We would be providing the space, however. At one point, we were asking for the schools to, to help address that. We think we've got some ways that we can, can do that. Some work is still going on, I think, as you all are aware, but we needed to propose something in this budget. So, we feel like that's a good step forward on a program that we think can make a difference for our volunteer recruitment and be a good step forward for some high school students with some of the things they may be interested in as well. Obviously, a decision before this board, but we had to propose that so that we could have, continue to have the conversation. Hopeful that the school board will be moving forward with that, but they're doing some finalizing of, of their budgets now. So, but again, continued strong support for education, as I've just mentioned. And as we look at the next slide, obviously, this is an important issue we need to spend some time talking about. And I know we have for some while, but that gives you an idea of the dramatic increases that we've seen in the Children's Services Act or private day school expenditures. The projected 17 and 18 don't look as dramatically different because those are projections. Budget to budget, it's about a $760,000 increase on top of some other increases I know we've had over the past several years. So, again, that's continued support for education, the folks that are in the private day schools. So, let's take a look at public safety quickly. Continued enhancement of public safety. This budget does propose two new sheriff's deputies and a fire inspector. The fire inspector is revenue neutral. It provides the county share in funding for the high school program I mentioned. It provides the county share in funding for the high school program I mentioned, includes technology upgrades, and it addresses some different needs in our fire academies to step up our training process to get those folks out on the street. And in terms of the capital program, there's a lot going on here with enhancement of public safety. Of course, the courthouse, which we've moved up in the CIP. You all are aware of the fire station that's underway. Cash capital for sheriff's vehicles is important. Debt service on the fire rescue apparatus and the radio system upgrade. We just had a great celebration of the animal shelter, and then you see a couple other things that are being proposed. This is an area, because of mandates and obligations and some other things, that we frankly would have liked to have made more progress on. It's one of those things I think we need to do that long-range financial planning on to get our staffing levels where I think you all desire them to be according to that long-range public safety staffing plan, but we have made some progress there. Take a look at infrastructure. There's the great groundbreaking celebration that we had this weekend. Some of the investments in the community. These are the items that you see before you that are driving some increases in our debt service for improvements in quality of life that we've realized over these last couple years and that are reflected in the increased expenditures in this budget. Future investments in infrastructure on the next slide. Over the 10 years, you can see the top two items are significant, but there's a number of other important investments being made in infrastructure as we look to the future in the proposed budget and the CIP that you'll see along with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Mr. Thomas.
I see Hartwood Elementary and Ferry Farm Elementary, pretty significant projects missing from this list. Are they delayed or are they completely cut out of the CIP?
I think we are in a state of reconsidering, taking a look at all of the school capital projects. I don't know if one of our staff could speak to that more directly, but I think the whole CIP is in a state of flux right now because of the question mark about moving the high school up. In order to do that and be able to afford it necessarily, we would have to look at all the projects. I don't mean to say that there's any decision to delay what may have been thought about, but I think that's a process that we've got to go through the next couple of months.
And your proposed CIP, though? Where are those two projects?
We are holding everything where it is in the adopted CIP. No change. That includes the high school staying out in 10. So a lot of analysis needs to go on, and there's been some discussion at some of the committees and so forth. That is important work. That's a part of this Eye to the Future, and I think both on the school side and on local government's side, the discussions with the boards is how do we move this forward? Why don't we take the time to really look at the projections closely before we make that decision? So no changes to the currently adopted CIP until that work is done. Purchase of development rights, very important program, critical part of growth management strategy of the board. Some discussion that we had, significant discussion during the retreat. As you look at the next page, you'll see that we've made a more significant commitment to the PDR program. You can see some up and down years in terms of the money that we've been able to put towards this program, and what we're trying to do is to show a much stronger commitment to that in this proposed budget. This is just the county revenue that's gone towards the program. There are grants from year to year, which obviously are a result of staff's efforts and the board's efforts, but we thought it was good for you to be able to see the actual county revenue going into this and how it's changing and being proposed to be changed. That total of about $900,000 is one-time dollars. You all directed that the rollback tax money at about $80,000 that goes to the sort general fund actually stay to pay for the PDR program, so that is included in here. Beyond that, we have dedicated the ramp up or set aside for the SAFER grant, the 366 I mentioned, to go to the PDR program. And we have also proposed in this budget that we take off the top some of the year-end monies and dedicate it, first of all, to enhancing the PDR program. We've put it in here at about $250,000, along with those other sources, to get us to this $900,000. Our year-end monies, because of the good work our staff does and our revenues coming in a little stronger, certainly exceeds that significantly, but we have decided to at least put that forward as an idea that you dedicate some of that anticipated year-end money towards the PDR program and moving it forward.
Mr. Foley, whenever we talk about this, I think it's important to mention a couple of other things. When you say grants, the history will show you that we double our money on this. It's almost, I'm pretty sure I could say that factually, we double our money. So that's a good match, and what you see here, the thousands of acres that Stafford County has managed to conserve, the 10,000-plus acres through a multitude of programs, this being a big part of that, over the last 15 years, has resulted in over 2,000 homes in the rural areas, the hardest-to-serve areas outside of the USA. We're talking one-hour bus rides, for instance, or more, being taken, being put in conservation. Homes can't, aren't going to ever be built there. So I'd like to mention that when we talk about the money going in, what we're getting besides open space preservation. We're really redirecting the growth pattern, which you mentioned earlier, in the county, and we're doing it respecting property rights.
Agree 100%, Mr. Chair, and I think that's great for a greater clarification on that issue. This is about growth management. It's about extinguishing development rights in areas we don't want development to happen because they drive up our infrastructure cost, and that's the reason we placed it in this infrastructure section, because it really does work to do what you just said. So I appreciate that clarification. Economic development, the next area we want to take a look at. What is on the screen here is not intended to be something that we would read, but it is the primary goals of the strategic plan itself. The item that you see at the bottom is taking all of those goals and putting them into a more actionable step forward through a new business plan, which will be, create a greater emphasis on the priorities that need to move this program forward. We reviewed that with you at the retreat, and that would become our action plan moving forward to implement all those things you see listed above. But let's talk about this budget and what's included in it to try to move the program forward. We do have a new full-time economic development director. We used to have a deputy county administrator working on that. We have restructured and redesigned, and so this budget reflects now a full-time position on a program that is so key to our future and growing our tax base. So that full-time help is a significant investment in here. We are proposing some changes to the merchant's capital tax, a 25% reduction in that tax. In addition, we have reallocated any of another 25% of that total to new investments in economic development. And because the program is new, because the board needs to engage with us on it, we have sort of set it aside for the option of you making some investments that will have a great return for us, or if you want to provide additional tax relief for merchants' cap, that money is sitting there. So there's a total of 50% of that tax. We would like to engage with you a little bit about strategies that may have more of a bang for the buck than just dropping another 25%, but that is also something that we can do and that is completely up to you in this budget process. We tried to put something creative here that would give some options in terms of you all helping direct our economic development program. There are some significant utility improvements in our targeted growth areas, courthouse area, center port, southern gateway, and Boswell's Corner that are reflected in the CIP, and we are trying to be creative about how we move forward with this. We're exploring and considering with you what investments and partnerships might help to accelerate the pace of our economic development program. This public-private partnerships, and I mean in kind of loosely, getting, working together with the private sector to help jumpstart economic development, particularly in our targeted growth areas, may be something that we need to think about in some different kinds of ways, particularly if we want to attract some of the retail, commercial, and restaurant types of things that you're talking about. Targeted growth areas, urban type of development where you want it to happen, where people can get out of their cars and walk to restaurants, maybe work and live in a place. Those are the kind of things that can generate some economic development, I think, along the lines of what you've talked about. There's some good work that's been done by staff. I think we need to take that to the next level of consideration, and this budget just proposes that we stay focused on that as a strategy going forward as we engage you over the next year. Our final area here, service excellence, investing in team Stafford, ensuring service excellence through the retention of our valuable workforce. This budget includes a 2% COLA, a continuation of trying to move our staff to the market. We are in a tough market, as we've talked about earlier today, and we were, we made 50% of an improvement last year in the budget, and the budget that we're in now, this proposes to try to take that another 25% closer to where the market is to help ensure that we maintain our quality services with quality staff. We have talked about turnover. This just reflects some of the history that we've had. It's been discussed at some of the committee meetings. The numbers are high. I would just say to you that it isn't as simple as pay. We have to look at total compensation and some of the other benefits that we provide as well. So we are proposing a pretty comprehensive look at this issue in the future, but we do think that the market increase is at least a piece that we need to do to move in that direction. You see here a chart that's familiar to you about how growth in staff is nowhere near where we had been back in 2009. Our public safety staffing, however, continues to grow to reflect that priority. Partner agencies, I think you all are aware that we've received some significant awards for a new process that we follow in collaborating regionally with our partners, and you can see some of the things that we're doing with partner agencies in the year ahead. These reflect the regional recommendations that have come out of that process that we talked about. In summary, this budget includes no tax increase, continues to address mandates and obligations on those investments that we've made in the future in quality of life, reflects a continued commitment to your priorities of education, public safety, and service excellence, makes some significant investments in economic development, and talks about some new ideas of how we can accelerate the pace of some of that, continues to focus on our workforce, and has an eye to the future. Mr. Chair, I know I've probably gone on longer than you'd like, but I wanted to make sure that we gave you a good overview of things, and again, thanks to the staff. Be glad to entertain any questions you may have.
Absolutely. Any questions?
When do I get the actual budget with the actual numbers?
It's, I think it's on the cart. We have it for you right now, so you will get it immediately, so you can take it home tonight after this meeting and start digging into the notebook. But yes, everything is available for you now.
Thank you.
Mr. Foley? I do have a question about the RACSB opioid-assisted treatment. Have we gotten any more information on that? Or is there somebody we can contact at the RACSB? I know what it is, and I would just have a question of, you know, what's the bigger plan with that? Because you can't just have an opio, one, I'd like to know what the problem is and why they need to have medically assisted opioid, and what the plan is and how they're linking up with the hospitals to make sure that the program's successful and we're not just having people cycle in and out of the RACSB. So is there a way we can start that discussion?
Yes, we will follow up your question and do some extra work and make sure when we get in a budget work session, we've got that for you. We'll provide some information to you as soon as we've got it together.
Maybe somebody from Snowden as well, somebody, you know, somebody who's in the field who works so we can understand what the plan in totality is. I don't want to just start having medically assisted opioid stuff without any support services, and they do not provide that support here at Stafford Hospital. So I'd want to know what the plan is, where we're going with that before we have it.
Ms. Mallory, you want another question?
I've already received a request asking when this is going to be online for the public.
It's online now?
It's online now?
Is that soon enough?
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? I think for your first presentation on the budget ever for us, you did a great job, and I don't think you took too long either.
Okay, well, thank you. The last thing is just the budget calendar. It does have some of your work sessions going on in committees. So just wanted to point that out to you. That's the process we had laid out. I think it was reviewed with you at the end of last year, and please let us know if there's anything you think we should do any different with the process going forward.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. That brings us to, do we have any adds or deletions? I don't believe we do. No? All right, so the agenda stands. We're going to, I don't think we need to approve the agenda if there's no changes to it. So I would ask if anyone wants to pull anything off the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman, excuse me, sir. There is an addition to the agenda that was just brought to my attention. It's something sent down from the Infrastructure Committee regarding Belmont Ferry Farm Trail and the George Washington Foundation.
Yes, that's right. Okay, so we would like to add that. I'd like, I'll accept a motion. Thank you.
Second.
And a second. That's motion seconded, please cast your votes. You may tally the votes. All right, it passes unanimously. Now we're ready to pull items from the consent. Ms. Bomke?
I would like to pull item five and item six, please.
Okay, item five and six. Any other? All right, I'll entertain a motion for the consent agenda minus items five and six.
They're moved.
Motion seconded, please tally, cast your votes. Tally the votes. All right, unanimously passed, and we will go to Ms. Bomke on item five.
Yes, and looking at the resolution, R17-70, I mean, I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Foley. On this item, this is money that, from what I understand, the treasurer was entitled to for the last three years. We're just now giving that money or appropriating it to the treasurer's office. Could we add something in the resolution that provides some kind of a trigger that the treasurer's office will receive and, you know, will budget and appropriate this money at the end of every fiscal year, maybe in July 1? Or, and I don't know, maybe it's something that Rashida needs to weigh in on. If indeed this DMV money is money that is due to the treasurer's office, I feel like we need to have some kind of a trigger in the resolution.
Mr. Chairman, I have spoken with the treasurer about this issue, and I've actually asked the county attorney to take a look at a number of documents and state guidelines regarding how we're supposed to provide that money to the treasurer. There's some thought that it should be appropriated annually and be available on a monthly-month basis, and I think that would be after we determine how much they actually collected that money being available. Obviously, we would appropriate it on a annual basis, but the bottom line is we're in the process of taking a closer look at that.
Okay.
I don't believe its intention is that we can wait three years to appropriate it. So I think we wanted to take a little extra time and get that right. I don't know that it affects the resolution, but if you want to hold off, we could then amend the resolution. But I think we'll be able to bring that over in another way that will ensure that...
That's fine. Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any further discussion? Please tally your, cast your votes, and you may tally the votes. And it passes unanimously. Item six, Ms. Bomke.
Yeah, I just think that, you know, this is our leftover money from the fiscal year, and we have a lot of good projects on here, and I think that the public should be made aware of these, and I just wanted to pull it out and make sure that people are looking how we're expending our year-end money, and motion to approve R17-71.
Motioned, seconded. And of course, anyone that would like to see this in detail can go online to Stafford County Government and look at agendas under the Board of Supervisors link, and you can look at this in detail. Cast your votes and tally your votes, our votes. It passes unanimously. That's the end of our consent agenda. Is someone going to read us into, we have a closed session?
We have one unfinished business.
Okay, one unfinished business, sorry about that. Who's going to do that?
Do we need this to move?
Oh, well, we don't, we all know the issue. This is to, this is number 12, Finance and Budget, authorize the county administrator to budget and appropriate capital project reserve funds for renovations of the commissioner of the revenues office.
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of R17-82.
Second.
Motioned and seconded by Mr. Thomas. Need further discussion?
I have a question. Maria, it looks like you were prepared to make a presentation on this item. Maria, it looks like you were prepared to make a presentation on this item.
Thank you. I'm Maria Paratchi, Financial Officer, and this item has been discussed by the several committees and at their board's retreat. This is a request to use some year-end money to renovate the Commissioner of Revenue's Office. We have reviewed the details, and I believe the board may have, if they had any additional questions, I'd be happy to answer them, but basically, it reconfigures the office, making it a bit more efficient. Right now, there are two entrances, and so by providing one primary entrance, it makes the use of staff a little bit more efficient. This does rework the entire area and would provide the needs for several years to come. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, we have a motion that's seconded.
I still have a few more comments, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Mallor, and then Mr. Cavalier.
So, this has been a point of contention for me. It was originally looked at for $250,000. We got the budgets back from the Commissioner of the Revenue, and the new range was $346,000 to $500,000 for a 5,400-square-foot office renovation. Although I am happy that we got this back down to $250,000, the concern that I have is about our policy and our process when it comes to these renovations. It appears that heads of departments are able to go ahead and go out, have a design done, pick whatever furnishings they want, pick whatever, you know, design that they have without any sort of eye to efficiency. So, I'm not going to support this, and I'm not going to support this because I don't believe that the staff and the Commissioners of the Revenue's Office need, you know, need to upgrade their furnishings. My problem with this is on policy and process. These are, you know, pop-up items that are done at the end of the year as opposed to a much larger plan towards funding capital improvements within all of our spaces. And so, although I feel for the Commissioner of the Revenue that it has been 25 years since they've had their offices renovated, and I get that, I do believe that the way we go about to renovating offices, and I've looked at, you know, the finance and budget renovation, which was $74 a square foot, which is incredibly high for that particular amount of square footage. And so, this concerns me, and I hope that as we move forward, although I'm not going to support this because of policy and process, that we really take a closer look at efficiently spending our taxpayer funds, and that's all I have to say about that.
Mr. Cavalier.
My position's going to be a lot more simple. I just can't support it because I see other higher priority items. We passed over a public safety item that was very important for this. For about the same money, we can buy a fireboat that the Fire Chief has advocated for. You know, we're not going to rip the carpet off the floor in the Commissioner of Revenue's Office to put out a house fire, and so, I can't in good conscience vote for this when we have other pressing needs.
Thank you. Mr. Snellings, and then Mrs. Sellers.
I'm going to support this, and I'll tell you why. This office is 25 years old. It has never been touched. These folks are using furniture that's 25 years old. These cubicles are no longer made, they're no longer manufactured. You can't get parts for them. I was in the Commissioner of Revenue's Office a couple of weeks ago. There are wires hanging down under desk. He's already had one accident where something broke off one of the cubicles and came down on an employee, and this is not unprecedented. I mean, in 2010, we took $400,000 and redid the Community Development Center at a cost of $92 per square foot. I don't disagree that we probably need a process, but the reality is, everybody in this building has had renovations except the Commissioner of Revenue, and I have to think about the quality of life of his employees. Employees spend most of their time in this building, and the efficiencies that he's going to create by doing this, he's already said he's going to eliminate the need to hire another employee, is going to pay for itself. So, I don't know what the hoopla is. Reality is, I think he's done a good job. It's $49 a square foot. We've got some others that are $80, $90 a square foot, but the renovation needs to be done. This is a 25-year-old office. It's never been touched. It's sort of like your house. You've got to paint it once in a while. You've got to maybe change the carpet. You've got to change the furniture. Things happen. They get old, they wear out. So, I'm going to support this. Thank you.
Ms. Sellers.
Mr. Chairman, I'm also going to support this, and I agree with Mr. Snellings, but I would add that this didn't just pop up. This has been coming up for a few years now, and Mr. Mioski and planning for this actually used money within his budget to help provide the studies and do all the legwork. So, I am going to support this, and I agree with Mr. Snellings. Our folks spend eight hours a day here, and if you've got to come to work every single day and sit in this cubicle with wires coming down, would you want to come to work in like that? Because I don't think I would.
Mr. Thomas.
I'm going to support the motion as well. For as long as I've been here, which is not that long, whenever we're preparing a budget and I was looking to find a couple of pennies here or there, or a creative way to spend the taxpayers' money very wisely, Mr. Mioski's always a guy I could go to. He's super conservative, we all know that. He values every single dollar that comes into this place, and for me personally, I know that if it wasn't something that was absolutely required and would get us some efficiencies in the future, and he didn't believe in the request, he wouldn't even ask us. So, for me, that's why I'm going to support the request.
Ms. Bomke.
Yes, I would just like to echo the comments of those that are in support, and I also am in support. I would just like to say to the public, if you would like to see what a dysfunctional office looks like, you could come to the Commissioner of Revenue, and for that reason, and it has been on the docket for a while, they deserve to have renovated space. Thank you.
And I don't think she means that you operate in a dysfunctional...
No, I said the dysfunctional space. I didn't say employees.
You know, anyone else want to comment before I close it out? The, we, this is an office that serves the public. I used to have occasion to use that office before I became a board member, and it's still exactly the same way it was, and that was 13 years ago and many, several years before that. So, you've certainly been patient, waiting, and it's not, you're right, it doesn't have a very, it's not a very appealing or welcoming or helpful place to get county services that we owe the public. Also, I don't want anyone to think that we neglect our fire and rescue or public safety. We regularly give them huge increases. For just a fraction of what we give them usually every year, you could have done these renovations many times over. The, and we don't give you those kinds of increases, so you, besides improvements to your office, we also don't give you operational increases that are significant. And we just approved a whole list of expenditures back on item six, $2.792 million, almost $2.8 million for things like a scoreboard at the Rouse Center and a lot of other things. So, when we talk about priorities and fire and rescue and putting out fires, I just, I want to put it in perspective that we have to do all of these things. We can't just focus solely on public safety, for instance. We have to find a balance. So, with that, I'll support this motion, obviously.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more comment.
Please.
And when I talk about policy and process, if you look at our CIP, we actually budget, plan, and approve in our CIP a $15,000 chiller. And so, these pop-up items, if Mr. Mioski has been asking for this, and I haven't seen it in a budget, I haven't seen it come through finance and budget, and this is not just his office renovations, I'm concerned about all the renovations. You know, finance and budget never saw the cost for the renovations, and I understand they were under $100,000, so they were at the discretion of the county administrator. But if we're putting in our CIP a $15,000 chiller, and we're planning, and we're appropriating, and we're scheduling that, then we should be scheduling in our process and part of our policy, office renovations. That is my point to this, because if Mr. Mioski has been asking for years, then I look at county staff and the leadership of this board and, you know, previous boards for not ensuring that it was included as part of our CIP document in our budget process. And so, with that, again, policy and process, very important to me.
Mr. Cavalier.
Just to clarify what Mr. Melde said about the Rouse scoreboard cost, that's going to be a reimbursable item, and that we're going to have sponsorships for that, and there will be money paid back to the county. So, that's not a true expense in its entirety.
Okay. I'm going to, I am going to have the last word on this. The, that's true, but also when the proposal that Scott Mioski hired a consultant to put together, he, it's not just renovation, I mean, they're moving walls, they're making it much easier to use for the public. So, we are, there's a benefit there, plus he showed an operational savings out in the out-years that pays, that helps pay for the cost of renovation, and he's going to have to have a renovation sooner or later. I agree with you on process. This is how we've always done it, and it has served us well. I can't argue that we might want to look at a process going forward. Maybe you could help us develop one, because I think you did a fabulous job up there, and kept, I'm not unhappy at all with the cost, the cost. Also, the items we just voted on, item six, there were several what you might consider pop-up items. Things do come up sometimes without going through a process of similar costs. So, with that, I would ask you all to cast your votes. Do we have, yes, we have a motion in favor of the resolution or against? You may tally when you have them all. Oops, I'm pushing. Try it again. All right, and that passes 5-2. Now, we can read into closed session?
A resolution to authorize closed meeting, whereas the board desires to hold a closed meeting for, one, discussion concerning the terms or scope of a public contract, where discussion in an open session would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the board; two, consultation with legal counsel employed by the board regarding a specific legal matter requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel; three, discussion and consideration of the performance of specific county employees; and four, discussion and consideration of a special award for a specific person; and whereas pursuant to Virginia Code 2.2-3711A17, comma, 10, comma, and 29, such discussions may occur in closed meeting.
Second.
Sorry, moved and seconded, please cast your votes. You may tally the votes, and that passes unanimously. We're going to go into closed session, and when we're finished, we'll come back out and certify, but then after that, we'll take, we may or may not have a motion out of there, and then we'll go to recess. We shouldn't, let me finish.
Walk across the street.
I like Jackie still. Oh, good. Okay, we're back in session. We have a motion to certify.
So, move.
Motioned seconded, please cast your votes, and you may tally the votes. And we are out of closed session, and we will recess until the 7 o'clock meeting. Okay, this meeting of the Stafford County Board of Supervisors is called to order. Meg Bomke is going to do the invocation, and Wendy will do the prayer.
Thank you, on behalf of all who have gathered here tonight for our public hearings. Thank you for life itself, for the measure of health we need to fulfill our role as elected officials. We pray for wisdom to govern amid the conflicting interest and issues of our times. We pray for a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. We pray for confidence in what is good and fitting. We pray for a keen thirst for justice and righteousness, and we pray for the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. In your name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We are, this brings us to the presentations by the public, part of our agenda. So, if anyone wishes to speak to us on an issue other than what is listed as a public hearing, you may come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have three minutes to speak. You'll get a two-minute warning, it's a yellow light, and when you have a red light, your three minutes is up, and you should be finished speaking. And just remember, if you speak to us, to address the board, and try to speak clear and concisely. So, with that, I will open the floor to anyone that would like to address the board. All right, then I'll close that section of the agenda. Before we go into public hearings, I wanted to request that we make one more add to our agenda and allow Senator Stewart to update us on some General Assembly bills that were, not right now, at the end of the agenda. Was that what you had asked?
Whenever you want.
Mm-hmm. That were of interest to us. So, would somebody make a motion to amend the agenda?
So move.
Any discussion? Cast your vote. You may tally the votes, and that passes unanimously. We've got you on the end. Won't be long. What's our first public hearing? Go ahead, Jeff.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, board members. The first public hearing tonight will be a zoning reclassification for a project called Quantico Village. The case number is RC-16151348. It's located within the Griffiths-Widewater election district. The request is to rezone property from B1 convenience commercial and B2 urban commercial to R3 urban residential high density. There are two parcels involved comprising a little over 12 acres in size. Quantico Village LLC is the applicant. The parcel highlighted in blue is the subject property for the rezoning case. We'll note that the B1 zoning is located in this area right here that is currently contemplated as being road access for the property. The balance of the property is zone B2 urban commercial and has been zoned that way since approximately 2009. There are development profers on the property that speak to building architecture and uses. The original GDP looked at this property as possibly having office or flex office space with potentially retail apartments above on the top floor. Since that time, the previous owner had submitted a site plan for a flex office space, however, did not include apartments. Looking at the surrounding zoning for the property...
Ms. Mallor.
I'm sorry, how many apartments were allowed with the original zoning?
It wasn't specified in the original zoning. It was based on square footage of the buildings, so...
Roughly, how much square footage could you get with the buildings, which would give you?
If, I'd have to go back and verify this, but I believe they were looking at about 150 apartments.
About 150 apartments?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
The, as you can see by the zoning map, the surrounding zoning is a mixed bag. We have R1 residential zoning to the east, which is in the yellow color. We have R2 residential zoning to the south, which is in the orange color. We have an A1 agricultural zone property immediately adjacent to this property. It's currently occupied by a church. And we have R4 manufactured homes, which is a mobile home park in this location, and there's a smattering of commercial uses up and down the Route 1 corridor in this area. This aerial photo shows the existing conditions of the site. It's currently undeveloped with a area that's been cleared in the location of a high portion of the property. We have a high portion of the property located here as well as a lower area in this middle part, and then another high portion of the property over here. The overall site development's going to incorporate mainly this part of the property. This is the generalized development plan. It was submitted with the application. It shows 86 townhouse units being proposed. As I mentioned earlier, we have a single point of access off of Telegraph Road in this location. There's a proposed turnaround in this vicinity as well as an internal circulation pattern to try to address concerns from fire and rescue about access within the site. The property would have extensive buffering based on different use types, to the north, adjacent to the church, to the east, adjacent to remaining commercial zone property, and also to the south, to some of the... commercial zone property, and also to the south, to some of the other uses, which include Midway Island, which is part of the military facility at Quantico.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Snowy.
Am I correct when I say this is the only access point?
Yes, sir.
So there's no requirement because of the number of units to have two?
No, sir. From a fire code standpoint, they prefer a second access when you go above 200 units.
Okay.
And our subdivision ordinance also has some limitations for number of access points. Due to the configuration of this property, there is no immediate access available, so they likely be eligible for an administrative waiver if a second access was required. This is an image from the comprehensive plan. It reflects the Boswell's Corner planning area. The subject property is highlighted in green on this map. The area is designated for highway commercial uses along Route 1. It's the orange color. And then business and industry uses, which are the gray color on the map. Prior to adoption of our most recent comprehensive plan, we had developed a redevelopment area plan for Boswell's Corner. And part of the visioning document included a number of images which showed development potential for the overall area. The property where the proposed development would occur is highlighted in red. The yellow-colored blocks and configuration you see on the image reflect basically townhouse-type development, which is very similar to what the applicant is proposing in this case. It's a slightly different situation in that the overall redevelopment plan recommended a grid network of streets. We had more commercial retail uses oriented closer to the intersection of Telegraph Road, and higher-density development located near that intersection with residential at lower densities fanning out from the area. Staff would note that in the redevelopment area plan, as we were going through the planning process, Quantico had expressed some concerns about potential residential development densities because we didn't know the full effects of the ARCU study and noise studies associated with the base. So when the redevelopment area plan was adopted, there was a limitation on new residential development, essentially saying that any new residential development would have to be offset by shutting down existing zone properties or existing zone developments. Since that time, we've had the ARCU study. Quantico has weighed in on this proposal and finds that there's not a specific concern because they are trying to address noise mitigation measures. And I'll get into that in a little bit in the presentation. Again, the military influence area, it's in our comprehensive plan. It recognizes various areas of intensity of noise impacts associated with the base. This is located in Zone 2, so it's an area that has moderate influence from noise impacts from Quantico. The applicant has tried to address that in their proffers, specifically annotating notification to future purchasers of the units in the project that Quantico is nearby and makes noise. And also, they're providing sound attenuation measures in the construction of the homes to reduce the sound level down to 45 decibels on an average daily basis. The applicant is proposing a monetary contribution, and there's an updated proffer that we received today. It increased the monetary contribution to $2,400, $24,500 per unit, for a total of $2.1 million roughly. Our proffer guidelines that were in effect last year, and I'll note that this application was filed before July 1st, so it falls under the old proffer system. So the board can negotiate with the applicant and accept a monetary proffer for off-site capital facilities. The proffer guidelines that were in effect for this type of application had townhouse development at a little over $41,000 per dwelling unit. The other proffers dealing with the case limit the development to comply with the GDP. Essentially, the layout that we saw would be the general configuration of the property. It limits the overall number of units to 86. It requires a construction of a tot lot prior to the 16th occupancy permit. So generally, you're on your third stick of townhouse units will have a tot lot. I had mentioned earlier the monetary proffer contribution...
Excuse me, Jeff, Ms. Mauer.
And I'm jumping ahead, looking down at this. In the construction of the right turn lane into the project, what's the estimated cost for that? Do you know?
I do not know. I'd have to ask the applicant and his engineer to address that question directly.
Okay. I'll wait till you're finished, and then ask the applicant. Thank you.
As Ms. Mauer mentioned, a right turn lane, so that would ease traffic going into the property. They would construct dwellings in conformance with images that were included in the board package, and I'll show you a copy of that in a second, and also efforts to mitigate concerns with Quantico. This is the architectural designs being proffered and referenced in the proffers. This meets a number of the recommendations in our comprehensive plan for our neighborhood design standards. As you can see from the building facades, they are varied. They some extend and project in front of others. We also have dormers and bay windows and things of that nature to break up the facade of the building. Also, you can see from this design that they include brick or stone masonry in some of the facades, again, to try to break up the image and make it look more high-quality. Also, you'll see here with this image, and it was a little hard to see in the general development plan, but each of the units will be garage units with driveways. And overall, in looking at the evaluation, staff finds a number of positives with the application. The proposal is consistent with the established residential development pattern in the area, having another townhouse neighborhood right next door, as well as a mobile home park. The residential use would reduce potential traffic impacts compared to the current B2 urban commercial zoning. The proffer building design, as I mentioned, is consistent with our comprehensive plans and neighborhood design standards. The proposed use fits into the concept that was in the redevelopment area master plan, and they've made efforts to minimize any conflicts with operations at Quantico. As far as the potential negatives, the proposed use is inconsistent with the map for the overall planning area for Boswell's Corner, recommending business and industry and highway commercial uses. The monetary proffers are below the proffer guidelines, however. Staff would note that based on the proffers we received today, they're very comparable to a project the board considered favorably recently, which was known as Courtyards at Colonial Forge. That was a similar project, but a little bit different, and they were proposing townhouse-style condominiums, so they were looking at a multifamily proffer guideline versus these would be fee simple townhomes, which, under our proffer guidelines, has a higher dollar value associated with it. The planning commissioner's deliberations have recommended denial of the application for the reasons stated above, and staff does as well at this point in time. Ms. Sellers.
Mr. Harvey, what is the difference between the townhomes, the fee, what did you call them, fee simple, something like that?
Yes.
And a condominium? They look very similar, so what makes them different?
Yes, Ms. Sellers. The difference mainly is ownership. And the fact of a fee simple townhome, the owner of the townhouse unit owns the house, as well as the lot that the house sits on. Compared to a condominium, where typically you own on the inside of the four walls of your dwelling unit, and the association owns the outside walls, as well as the grounds in which the building is located. So it's mainly an ownership structure. With a townhouse development, you'll normally have a homeowners' association that'll be in charge of maintaining the grounds and the parking lots, whereas in a condominium association, it may be more expansive because you're dealing with the buildings and as well as the grounds. So it's very similar. There's very little difference in how the units look and function.
So why would we, why would, why would the proffers be different, right? Because some of them are to offset the costs associated with...
Yes.
The people in that house.
And the guidelines that we have in effect today, it says multi, it says multifamily dwelling units. It says townhomes and single-family dwelling units. In the case of a condominium, it's classified as a multifamily unit based on the fact that they're not subdivided lots. That's the only...
So in my head, I guess it would be maybe the roads, the maintenance of the parking lot, or the roads in and out of it. Under a condominium, they'd probably be maintaining those, or no? Is that a bad assumption?
Well, it depends on how the project's designed. With a condominium, typically, all the streets are private. In a townhouse development, you could have some streets that are public, some streets that are private. But all the private amenities in either case are gonna be maintained by a homeowners' association or condominium association.
Ms. Jeff, do the condominium proffer fees, are they similar to apartment multifamily?
Yes, sir.
So what it is, it was a kind of a mistake. We used the word condominium, and we were thinking that we meant apartments versus, which is about the same thing. But the townhouse development you saw come in last time, which is very different than we've ever seen, was a townhouse condominium project, and we didn't really contemplate that. It never came up when we talked about. So the other guys got a discount. We meant for town, I remember distinctly, Cord Sterling wanted, and he led us in the decision to charge townhouses the same as homes. But that's how I think we got there. I think, you understand what I'm saying? I think when we said condominium, we meant apartments.
No, I didn't assume, I didn't think that. What I'm trying to...
I'm telling you what happened. I was there. That's what we were thinking.
Well, I'm looking at this project and trying to figure out the proffers and why they would, why we would compare them to that project, which are totally different projects and locations, and infrastructure needs is where I'm getting at.
And they're the same. Really not much difference between the condominiums and the apartments. I mean, the condominiums and the townhouses, when it's, when they're built like townhouses, same infrastructure.
I'm sorry, I digress into that.
I'm finished, Mr. Chairman. Any other questions of Jeff or staff? Would the applicant like to come address the
Good evening. My name is Dan Webb, and I'm representing the LLC that owns the property. And, you know, I don't have a whole lot to add. A couple of things I'd like to point out is that we are able to reduce, you know, if this were to be rezoned, the vehicular counts from about 2,000 vehicle trips per day. If it were developed, you know, the way it's zoned now, down to about 500. We didn't, you know, get any negative feedback from Quantico. We did meet with the planner, Stephen Hunley, and, you know, he said that they did not have any opposition to the project. You know, when we first started this, we looked at the Boswell's Corner redevelopment plan, and, you know, it showed residential here, so that we felt like we were in compliance with the comprehensive plan. And, you know, the way it is zoned now, there is a large amount of commercial space to be developed. But as Mr. Harvey, you know, said, when it was approved, there were commercial apartments or residential units that were planned there all along. And so we really feel like we're putting less stress, and we're putting, you know, a viable project that can be constructed, that will put residential units in an area that we really feel like they're needed today. But I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have.
Ms. Mauer.
How much, this installing of the right turn lane, how much is that roughly?
I would say about 150,000.
Okay. And I have one more question. Do you know how many commercial apartments? I know Jeff said roughly 150. Mr. Milde here is telling me it's less than that.
Well, I mean, my recollection was right around 75.
That's about right.
Okay.
Meg, Ms. Bomke.
Mr. Webb, explain to me how you deal with the noise attenuation within a building? What's the product?
Well, there are products that just have noise attenuation ratings, different insulation, the types of windows, the types of siding, roofing materials.
So it's a myriad of things. It's not any one thing?
Right.
Gotcha. Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Any other questions? And how much square footage of commercial, how much square footage was approved, or what was your estimation that brought you to that 75 units you must have?
About 180,000.
That's total?
Mm-hmm.
So 75 units using a 1,200-square-foot, 1,300-square-foot number for the...
Well, it was 180,000 square feet of commercial space, and then there were gonna be 75 additional apartments in addition to that. And that's why the, you know, the traffic count is so high.
Was it our old B2 zoning that allowed commercial apartments?
It was.
So that was, that's based on square footage, not on account, if I'm not mistaken?
I think so. My recollection is looking at the proffers. You know, they talked about a number of commercial apartments. And the applicant, when they came through the rezoning before, they had a $10,000 a unit proffer for any residential unit that were, you know, to be constructed.
Sure. I remember when we did that. How long ago was that rezoned? Do you remember?
Do you remember? I want to say it was 2006.
Mr. Milde, it was 2006.
My first year on the board. It was a great project. It's too bad it never got built. It was a beautiful mixed-use idea.
Mr. Milde, in 2008, that's when the code changed no longer allow commercial apartments as a buy- rent use.
That's right. So up till then, we could, you could, your square footage just had, you couldn't exceed your square footage with residential against what you were using for commercial.
Yeah, that's correct.
All right, that's...
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Sorry, Thomas. It's always difficult to take commercial property and convert it to residential. If the commercial was to be built out, how would you actually get to it, like, from the main corridor, Route 1?
Well, I mean, I think that's a problem. It's really, it's really not viable. That's why, you know, a site plan was submitted, approved, but it, you know, it's just not viable where it is. You know, you really need to have more direct access to Route 1 and out of Telegraph Road.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm. I have one last question. You and I spoke, and you know I had a specific interest, which was some type of mitigation of, which is my common ask, which is not enforceable necessarily.
Right.
Which is, do you have an open space preservation outside of the USA? I don't hear that in the proposal. I assume you were not able to come up with a...
We weren't at this point, no. Now, we did, we did look into that. That's something that I know was very important to you, and we looked at it, and we think it would be a good thing, but it's not part of the proposal today.
Understood. Thank you very much. All right. I will close, let you sit down and open the public hearing. Same rules apply. You may speak three minutes to this issue, and when the red light comes on, you will have used your three minutes, and you may sit back down. So would there anyone, anyone in the boardroom that'd like to address the board on this issue?
Good evening. Amy Hall, 11 Easter Drive. I'd like to thank the supervisors who have attended some of the school redistricting meetings in recent weeks. You've had the opportunity to see the stress that redistricting causes on families and communities. In recent meetings, you've discussed school impact of applications based on seats available. I'd ask that you consider school impact of this application based on the 90% optimal capacity that's referenced in your comprehensive plan. This application will have significant impact on Widewater Elementary School, and even the revised proffers will not adequately provide enough help for that school. Additionally, I'd like to ask you, or I'd like to say that I believe that accepting last-minute changes to proffers and development plans negates the intent of public notification and transparency of posting the packages online. Developers already have an advantage in their time allowed to not only present their projects to you, but to also rebut public comments. I'd like to ask you to reconsider the fairness of accepting last-minute changes to your constituents, and I'd like to ask you to deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else in the chamber like to address the board on this All right, I will close the public hearing and give the applicant a chance to respond, if you'd like.
Well, when it comes to schools, again, when the original project was approved, it had a residential component with it, and I believe that was considered. And we have increased the residential proffer considerably from where that original application was. But other than that, no.
All right, thank you. And actually, this is the official closing of the public hearing after your response. So I'll bring it back to the Griffiths-Widewater District.
I'd like to move for ordinance O-00O17-10, actually.
Second. I have a motion in a second. By who?
Me.
By Mr. Thomas?
If I could, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me?
Please, yes.
This project still fell under the old rules, per se. They put it in before July 1st of last year, so we were able to beat and go over some aspects of the project, which we no longer do. But originally, the Webbs came to me and asked me to put in apartments there. And after the debacle at Acquah Town... And after the debacle at Acquah Town Center, I didn't have any stomach for apartments any longer. And so I asked them to consider something else and they came up with the townhouse plan. And frankly, there are townhouses to their north and there are, to their south and there are townhouses right across the street. Those are primarily the only residential neighbors in this particular area of the county, except for a few scattered single-family units that have been there for a long time. I don't think this area is a reasonable area for a commercial project because, one, it doesn't have access to Route 1 corridor. I don't think anyone is going to drive down Telegraph Road looking to do business unless you lived out on the Wide Water Peninsula and that's a limited number of people at this point. And I do want to point out that the proffers, although they were amended here recently, they use the same exact amount that we approved on a project last month. So that became, de facto, the new benchmark. And that was something that, when we talked with them, I didn't give them a specific number as to what I thought the proffer amount should be because that's always been a fluid number. But because we approved this 24/5 last month, that seems like a reasonable basis now. And I'd just like to further point out that there is, there was absolutely no opposition for this project from anyone, any of the neighbors in my district. I mean, we had a speaker tonight from another district. But there's no one in the vicinity who came out opposed to this at the planning commission nor at this particular board meeting. So all that being said, that's why I'm supporting this project. And the webs, to tell you the truth, are not your typical developers, I don't feel. They're good members of the community. They're very honest to deal with and very forthright in their manner that they approach things. I really couldn't ask for someone better to deal with and I trust them and how they'll do this, this particular project. Yeah, residential isn't always the first choice and yeah, it adds a few people to the schools, but we're never going to stop residential growth in its entirety. And the fact of the matter is that the mixed use would have been a nice idea, but it's not really viable in this location. It doesn't, it doesn't work. And you look up and down Route 1 and you see why. So, you know, all those things being said, that's why I'm in support of this project.
Mr. Thomas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When I first saw this project, I guess it was probably a year ago, and pulled up the small area plan for the area, I actually felt it was pretty compatible with what we were looking for. So when I read the background report this weekend, I was a little confused that staff didn't think it fit in. And I normally do not go against staff recommendation. But I did feel that, you know, it kind of does call for that in that area. And also, as far as the school impacts, they already could put all those apartments there now. So in my mind, they're paying proffers on additional units that they could really just do tomorrow without us saying a thing. So I feel like they should get a lot of credit for the proffer amounts that they went up to. And then the third thing is, I think the mixed-use project 11 years ago was probably, you know, a little before its time. I just think it's the location that probably doomed that project and it, you know, it's just too far off of Route 1. So I see this as a much better use. We're not adding a whole lot of additional infrastructure needs because the apartments are already approved there. So for those reasons, I will be in support of this.
Ms. Bomke.
When I met with the webs, I told them I couldn't support the project because the proffers weren't at the level that I thought they should be at in light of the other project. But I see with the addendum that you have brought your proffer levels up to where our other project was that Jack mentioned, that we just voted on. I would like to just echo what Jack said, Mr. Cavalier said about working with the webs. I've gotten to know the webs very well on a project in my district called Mount Pleasant. And it's been a difficult project because the people that live there have lived there for 40 years and then the trees behind their properties were removed. And, you know, they enjoyed wildlife back there. They enjoyed a lot of peace and quiet. And it was difficult for everybody. And I can just tell you, they've, they've gone the extra mile and it's been difficult on all of us in trying to make sure we're doing the right thing for the residents. So, and I commend you for those efforts. I know it hasn't been easy and it hasn't been easy on the residents either. So, and in light of, I think it's a good place for this project, so I will be supporting it. And we do have room for the children at the schools based on this project and I think it's a good location up there. Thank you.
Ms. Sellers.
Because I'm going to go against this. I'm not going to be voting in support. It doesn't happen very often. I just, I don't think it's a good location. I'd like to see a mixed use there. I think if you give it enough time, it will be a good place. I drive the other side of Telegraph Road every day, every single day, and it's coming. So I will be voting against this, but I think it's a little premature. If you gave it enough time, we'd see that mixed use come to fruition.
Ms. Mauer.
Yeah. So when I walked in tonight, I was going to vote against this project. My first question was going to be, why don't we accept proffers according to our proffer guidelines? And they're spelled out, they're in black and white, but in actuality, you're paying more than the proffer guidelines. And so according to our proffer guidelines, it's 45,000 per unit, but you get a credit for units that are already approved. And so you're looking at a delta of 11 units. Those 11, or the 75 units required a, required a $10,000 a unit proffer, so that's 750,000. The delta of 45,000 plus the 11 comes to 495, which is $1.2 million is what we should be getting in proffers. And according to our proffer guidelines that we put out there, and I am, I am big on consistent rules of engagement. And so, so you're actually paying 2.1 million with an additional $150,000 in transportation improvements. So you're a million over what our proffer guidelines say and I agree with development as long as it pays for itself. So that coupled with the fact that we're reducing the vehicle trips per day, Telegraph Road is a mess and I just can't imagine a mixed-use development out there on that two-lane road. And so, so the fact that you're paying more in proffers than what we require from our proffer guidelines and the reduction in vehicle trips per day, I'm actually going to support this project.
Anyone else? Well, no one here will be surprised that I won't support this project. I try to temper my comments, but to me, it's just another small subdivision that has nothing unique about it. It's very similar to what Stafford has been doing the last, in some cases, often, well, did a lot in the 90s and the early 2000s. It doesn't strike me as unique. It's not that far off of Route 1. You can see the bend in the road when you look past the Boswell's mechanic auto repair place. You can see the curve with entrances. We did a lot of work on a redevelopment plan for the area and so we certainly had a vision. This is not consistent at all with a vision and visions take a while to be realized. They don't happen overnight. We just started coming out of our bad economy a couple of years ago. The planning commission voted it down and we got a denial unanimously and we got a denial, you know, a request to deny from, from the staff, which is really unusual. I don't know if you've noticed, but almost everything that gets to us nowadays hasn't, you don't usually have, ask us to turn it down. So I don't think it fits into the vision or it's just another 86, 86 homes. And it makes, we all know that mixed use is desirable because it has the commercial component, is supposed to create a little bit of a work, possibly a work-live and also generates the tax revenue off of the commercial indefinitely. It helps off and mitigate some of the impacts of residential. So it'll pass, we'll see what becomes of it, but I can't support it. With that-
Mr. Chairman, can I clarify the motion? The board is currently considering O-17-10 with the proffers last revised March 6, 2017.
That is motioned and seconded. With that, I'll ask you to cast your votes. And you may tally the votes when you're ready. And it passes four to three. And that brings us to number 14, planning and zoning. Consider the creation of a new overlay district entitled Integrated Corporate and Technology Park.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This public hearing is to consider adoption of ordinance O-17-03 to establish a new overlay zone for the county. And what this would do is establish the overlay zoning regulations. It would not rezone any particular property at this point in time, but establish the zoning district regulations. The ICTP overlay zone would be intended to integrate uses in a large corporate and technology park. Right now, we have a number of situations in our corporate and technology parks. We have mostly light industrial zoning in them, but also a mixture of commercial zoning in one case. In another case, the applicant's asking for commercial zoning because of the need to have retail facilities and other types of support services to service the office uses within these projects. What is an overlay zone? It's basically an extra layer of zoning on, that can address special needs and situations. We often see what we refer to as base zoning, like M1 light industrial, B2 urban commercial, A1 agricultural. And in those zoning categories, it sets out what uses are allowed, what the setbacks are, how tall the buildings can be, what uses require special review by the Board of Supervisors before they can occur on a piece of property. And the overlay zone would add some flexibility in some cases or maybe be more rigid in other cases due to special conditions. Some examples of overlay zones that we have in the county are the flood hazard overlay zone, the highway corridor overlay zone. We also have a redevelopment areas overlay zone. And this would be operating similar to those in that base zoning would still be there, but this would add additional development regulations on to what is already allowed on the property. The Board of Supervisors initiated this based on some of the community feedback that they received. The purpose of the ICTP would be, again, applying to large corporate and office complexes of at least 400,000 square feet of existing space. Right now, we only have one project in the county that qualifies for that, that's Quantico Corporate Center. Riverside Business Park could potentially qualify should they build one or two more buildings, depending upon their overall build-out. The regulations would limit any new primary structures on sites within these areas to between 40 and 80 feet in height. That's intending to make sure the buildings are going to be three to six stories tall. So it's not going to be a low-level industrial use or single-story industrial use or a single-story retail use. It would have to have a mix of uses within the same building, more than likely. There would be a variety of retail and service uses, such as childcare centers, which would be allowed. Currently, they're allowed in commercial zones, but not in industrial zones and that's been a big need. In fact, the board rezoned a piece of property to commercial use in Quantico Corporate Center for that specific purpose. A developer was building an office building and a portion of it was going to be occupied by daycare, so they had to get that property rezoned. If this overlay had been in place, we wouldn't have had to go through that rezoning necessarily just for that specific use. Also, multifamily residential would be a component of this, up to a density of 24 units per acre. And there'd be allowances for parking credits if a parking structure was built. That helps in the case of the office uses because typically, retail users like to see a lot of parking on the surface and see empty parking spaces, so they tend to overpark. But in the case of more mixed use and office space, they tend to more fully utilize the parking that they have available and probably need fewer spaces than you'd normally see for a retail type of, or industrial type setting. The, again, as I mentioned, the one area that currently could be applicable to this overlay zone as of today is Quantico Corporate Center. It does have a number of buildings already constructed in excess of 400,000 square feet in total. It has a variety of zones, M1 and B2, and this overlay could allow some flexibility in uses on, within that project. The overlay process essentially requires a, another zoning hearing. This is actually a zoning map amendment if the board chose to rezone property. Again, right now, we're setting up the zoning regulations for how the overlay zone would work. But if the board wanted to put this in action, either an individual landowner would petition the board to rezone the property or the board could, on its own initiative, start rezoning.
So are we creating a zoning, if this were to pass, would we be creating a zoning category or a zoning area on a map?
Yes, zoning category. Thank you, Mr. Milde. It makes it a little clearer. It creates the zoning category and the rules that operate within that zoning category. It requires separate public, series of public hearings to change the zoning map to put the overlay on particular properties.
Ms. Sellers.
Can we go to the previous one? So within Quantico Corporate, this Quantico area, we have this situation, I think, at least we used to, where you could, the road, you get into a certain part of the property and it was zoned one way and you couldn't use, would this help take care of that issue?
Yes, ma'am.
Well, it wouldn't, all this does is create a zoning category.
Correct. As Mr. Milde is referring to, this is creating the category for zoning. If the board imposed it on properties within Quantico Corporate Center, it could resolve the concern that Ms. Sellers was alluding to where industrial uses cannot take advantage of commercial zone property and vice versa.
Every time we bring this up, we're staring at a picture of Quantico Corporate Center. We're always relating it to, back to one owner. But my understanding of a zoning category is that that's really not what we're doing. We're just creating another zoning category like PTND or B1, B2, B3, A1, A2, right? Just another zoning category. So it really is applicable anywhere if it meets the requirement, the criteria.
That is correct. And, Mr. Chairman, and as we sit today, Quantico Corporate Center is the only property that meets that threshold. As I mentioned earlier, Riverside Business Park could, if they move forward with one or more additional office buildings. And other properties in the, in the, in the more distant future could do as well.
So, so right now, anyone could come in and try to rezone to R4, which is trailer parks, or R3, which is apartment complexes, almost anywhere in the county. There's almost no criteria on those, right? I mean, just, I want to just dispel something we're going to hear in a few minutes. We might hear in a few minutes that we're creating an extra apartments or multifamily if we were to create a new zoning category. It's, how would it be any different than R4 or R3 that already exists in our, in our ordinances?
Someone could rezone to a different district and have apartments in that district. It could be a standard R3 zone or it could be UD zone, which we have, like with the Aberley project, which is contemplated to be in a overall-
But they have to come through the board to get a rezoning?
Correct.
Okay.
The board controls zoning and how it occurs through the county.
This is just, we're talking about creating a category that just happens to only work in one place in the county at the moment?
At this time, yes.
Thank you. Sir, Mr. Sellers?
Just a little bit confused here. It says requires application of public hearing. So if I own property there and we lay this map in, or this new zoning category, and I want to put in 300 apartments, I've got to come back for a rezoning?
Yes, sir.
On every case? Every time I, every time I want to put in apartments, I have to come back for a rezoning?
Yes. Every time the overlay zone would be put on a piece of property, it is basically a zoning map amendment, just like what we consider any other rezoning. It requires public hearings with the planning commission and the Board of Supervisors. And the Board of Supervisors has the authority to approve or deny the zoning change.
Well, that's, I'm a little confused because I was, it's been portrayed to me that this was, would make it a buy right.
Well, Mr.-
And that's why the planning, isn't that why the planning commission?
That was some of the concerns that the planning commission had. If the Board of Supervisors initiated a, a specific overlay zone on specific property and that rezoning on specific property to this ICTP overlay, there would be no proffers associated with it because with the motion made by the board to rezone property, there is no owner's consent that's required and there is no proffers.
But you are not suggesting that any of us are trying to rezone property right now? You're just trying to-
No, sir.
Okay.
So Jeff, you're saying that the assumption made by the-
So Jeff, you're saying that the assumption made by the Planning Commission is incorrect, then?
There was a lot of discussion about that. What if the board did this? What would the impact be?
Sounds like they were wrong, is what I'm saying. Is that, am I right, or am I wrong? Are they wrong? That's what I want to know.
Well, I don't know that it...
Mr. Cavalier, we hadn't...
Let's not go down that...
Yeah, it hasn't gotten to that point yet.
I still say they're wrong, but...
If that was their assumption, then it seems that it would be incorrect.
Yeah, so if an individual property owner petitioned to be in this overlay zone, it would be subject to rezoning, then the board could negotiate proffers with that property owner in the future. The Planning Commission, when they were reviewing it, they wanted to see what the potential impacts of the residential uses would be. We know that residential uses could be considered to be complementary to the corporate nature of this area, where people could live close to where they work, can also provide 24/7 people throughout the area, so they could support some of the retail activities. Because normally, in your typical office-type environment, after 6 o'clock, most people leave, and it becomes an area where there's not a lot of activity. Allowing the housing component could help with the mixed-use nature and supporting some of those additional services. The Planning Commission asked, again, to take a look at the school impacts, so I've provided slides based on our discussion we have with them.
How can you calculate school impacts when you don't even know the area that might be proposed for a rezoning?
And they specifically wanted to look at Quantico Corporate Center, so, Mr. Chairman, if you'd like me to rather...
I'm just trying to figure out, are they proposing that somebody's going to come in and rezone the entire area? We own half of that red, by the way. We own half of that. That's our property.
Correct.
We own the leg, anyone watching on TV, of the red outline. So how are they coming up with these calculations?
Well, Mr. Chairman, the Planning Commission asked us to look at the three parcels that are not owned by the county that remain to be developed within that project.
Can I see those? Can we, I want to hone in on the three parcels that they think they're talking about.
Right here. On this map, we have Area 1, which is 12 acres, Area 2, which is 9.5, and Area 3, which is 1.7. The county's property is this parcel right here.
Okay, I'm going to keep going with this. Why, knowing a little bit about county zoning, why couldn't someone come in right now in Area 1 and apply for a rezone into R4?
Mr. Chairman, the property owner could if they wanted to.
I mean, there's no restriction, there's no criteria on R4 that makes it, excludes it from this particular piece of property?
Our overall comprehensive plan would recommend that R4 not go there.
Okay, trailer park, how about R3?
Or even R3 at this point in time, but that was some of the discussion with your public hearing last month about the comp plan amendment.
Does our overall comprehensive plan prohibit ICTP from this area, as it stands now?
No, sir.
So you could still come in, we've done it a million times, and amend the comprehensive plan at the same time we do a rezoning, right?
That is correct.
So if we come in in Area 1 and try to put in R3, it's the same scenario. So I'm just saying, if you all want to look at the school impacts, I think it's an unusual thing to examine right now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
What's the density per acre for R3?
R3 is currently seven units per acre.
And this is 24, correct? So, in fact, they could not come in and do R3 and accomplish their goals, because they're looking for three times the amount of density?
Not at that same density. If someone chose to go for the maximum density...
So we could create an R5.
R3 can still cluster, right? Did we get rid of the cluster bonus? We have rid of the bonus density on clustering. So I guess my point is that we don't, no one's coming in for an application yet. Did you have reason to believe someone's going to come in and try to rezone all this at one time?
Are we going to say that with a straight face?
I don't know what the plan is.
Yes, there is.
I haven't seen it.
How many acres is Area 1?
Ms. Sellers, Area 1 is 12 acres.
All right, please.
So if I understand this correctly, we've built Quantico Corporate Center with these office buildings. Now, we're kind of, some people are interested in this ICTP, and we're looking at expanding it to possibly include residential units. If you had an apartment complex with the 24 units per acre, which is double what we have in our TGAs right now, how much land would that take up?
Ms. Bomke, it would depend on the development proposal.
Well, based on the one that you told us, 278 units.
Well, the range on this chart, it looked at densities between 12 and 24 units per acre. The 556 is the maximum. If every property in Areas 1, 2, and 3 developed 24 units an acre, that would be the theoretical number of units they could yield. For discussion purposes with the Planning Commission, we looked at 12 units per acre as starting point, 24 at the high end. So 278 represents 12 units per acre for all three of those areas, built to the maximum extent possible.
Okay, so why would we do that in Quantico Corporate Center when our whole goal up there has been to do, to have more commercial office space? Help me understand that.
Well, Ms. Bomke, that's been an issue of debate. In fact, last month, the board, when you took up the comprehensive plan amendment for overlay districts in general, but referenced the ICTP, the board took out the multifamily component. In this particular situation, the public hearing for the ordinance was already set, and the recommendation from the board to the Planning Commission was to include the multifamily in the overall ordinance, so that's why we're here tonight. It's up to the board as to whether multifamily housing you feel is appropriate for this particular overlay zone.
Ms. Mauer.
Okay, thank you. So I want to, not that I want to speak for you, Mr. Harvey, but I do want to answer Ms. Bomke's question on why we would allow residential in here. And one of the things with tech parks, when we went and toured all the tech parks, all the tech parks that we toured had a residential component. There was this live, work, hopefully play-at-some-point concept. And when you think about 400,000 square feet, which is why there has to be a minimum of 400,000 square feet, and if you assume about 100, 150 people per square, or one person per 100, 150 square feet, which is kind of what the government estimates, you get 3,000 to 4,000 people all going to and from this place in order to work. And so we could have 3,000 to 4,000 people go on Route 1, going up and down Route 1, or up and down 95, or we can start looking at a residential component, which meets the tech park concept that we toured and saw all over the state of Virginia. And this way, because one of the things that I really don't like when we look at these rezonings, especially these mixed-use rezonings, is that they build the residential, and then they come along, which is what we...
Let's, I don't think we can do the debate right now. I want to go ahead and...
Are we still in public hearing?
We're not even there yet.
Okay.
We're still asking Jeff questions. So any other questions of Jeff? You'll have another shot at him.
I promise it's a relevant question.
I believe you, Mr. Thomas, go ahead.
If, for some reason tonight, the board wanted to put multifamily back in, would we have to go back and clean up the action we did at the last meeting somehow to make that marry up to this?
Well, Mr. Thomas, the answer is no, you're not required to amend the comp plan. It's good practice to have your comp plan and your ordinance to be consistent, but the comprehensive plan is a guide, it's not a law, unlike what we're discussing tonight, which is the law for the zoning regulations.
Okay, so we could leave them in disagreement if we wanted to. But good practice would dictate that we probably should reconsider that last action, correct?
Yes.
Any more questions of Mr. Harvey? Are you finished?
I had the other slides talking about how we got here, and I think the board's...
Take your time, I don't mean to rush you.
The board is very familiar with that. And I mentioned Riverside Business Park and other aspects. Overall, the staff is recommending approval of the ordinance without the residential based on the past action of the board with comprehensive plan. The Planning Commission, in its deliberations, recommended approval without the housing component.
I have a question. When was there ever an envisioned mixed-use component of the Boswell Corner Redevelopment Plan?
Well, Mr. Millay, we had, a number of years ago, worked on a separate ordinance for a form-based code for the Boswell's Corner area. The board adopted that zoning district, but it's never been enacted.
And why did we, yeah, and you mentioned it earlier, but I want to just make sure people are clear, why do we take out the residential component out of the Quantico Corporate Center or the redevelopment area?
At the time, Quantico was concerned about noise impacts with their operation. That was before we had the...
Encroachment, they called it encroachment.
Yes, before we had the updated ARCOs and noise studies.
And what has changed, and you mentioned it earlier, since that time? Why isn't Hunley in this room right now telling us he doesn't want this?
Well, the studies for this area show it's in the moderate noise-impact area, so there are measures that can mitigate the concerns.
And did the JLU's, the Joint Land Use Study that we did, did that somehow, you think, play into what appears to be a Marine Corps change of position? It's maybe a speculative question, I'm not sure if you know the answer.
I think the JLU's is a coordinating document compared to what the noise study is saying, so they kind of go hand in glove.
All right, those are all my questions. Any more before I open up the public hearing? All right, with that, I will open up the public hearing. You may come down and state your name and address and speak for three minutes. Anyone in the crowd? All right, with that, I'll close it, and I'll bring it back to the board, and we can have a yes ma'am.
I'd like to defer this. Have we closed the public hearing? Yeah.
Yes, I can close the public hearing, and we can...
I'd like to make the motion to defer this for at least a month. I need some time to wrap my head around this.
I'll second it, Mr. Chairman.
Well, you can make a substitute motion.
Because I'd like to sit down with staff and figure out what the heck's going on here. I feel more confused now than I did before. I watched the Planning Commission, and I thought there was some by-right component to this as well. So I'd like the opportunity to sit down with staff and at least understand it better.
Jack, is that just a comment, or do you have something to say besides that?
I'm thinking whether or not I want to make a substitute motion.
Ms. Bomke, you want to comment?
Yeah, I think that what I need to understand is, we just approved our comp plan, if I remember, last July. Is that right, Jeff? So why didn't this come up last year? Why are we revisiting this at this point in time? We approved our comp plan last year, so where was this component then?
Are you asking anybody?
I'm making a statement.
Okay. It's been, it's always been contemplated that we wanted mixed use up there. The only reason we didn't do it was because the Marine Corps was pushing back big time. And we started talking about the 3.1, 3.2, 3.3, and 3.4 areas inside of the noise-impact area, and we started talking about moving density around. We've been negotiating with Marines on how we might be allowed, because they really messed us up when they said, "We don't want any residential in your mixed-use plan for..." All of our other redevelopment areas have mixed use, and this one doesn't. And we now have, looks like we could at least make it a possibility. Now, all we're talking about here is creating a zoning category. And we could even add another layer, I don't see the necessity, because you'd have to come in each time, and 24 units may be the most, but we would be negotiating that each time if someone were to come in. Right now, you can't squeeze in what you'd want in a real mixed-use community, because they've already built the big buildings, and the setbacks and stuff are there. So if you wanted to turn that into a mixed-use community, like maybe like Garrison, for instance, you can't. You'd have to have a new zoning category, and my understanding is this gives you that opportunity to at least consider that. This is just another zoning category the board can consider on a case-by-case basis. That's just, that's my understanding. If you want, but we can, that's what I, how I understand it, I know what it means.
Can I add to that and say, you know, we're focused on the residential, but there are some other really neat parts of this, like that road. There is a problem where we do have the road that's zoned one thing, that therefore, we cannot do anything with the property behind it until we rezone that. So if it would take care of, I think there's some neat components to this, so I'd like to sit down with staff and get a better understanding, and I shouldn't have just watched the Planning Commission. I should have sat down first, but been busy, sorry.
Mr. Cavalier.
I just think that most of us are of the generation that we didn't really understand mixed use very well until very recently. And I think that maybe one of us on this board, I'll look way down the line here, is probably considered a millennial. And that group tends to want to work near where they, or live near where they work. And that's been the pervasive, forward-looking thinking in most parts of the country that have these technology parks. And for us to not include a residential component would be short-sighted on our part. And if we don't do this now or soon, that, you know, we're going to make a mistake that we can't undo. And then we're going to have more of the same, and we're going to have more traffic on Route 1, because people are going to be coming up and down Route 1 to go to work here instead of coming from the apartment, or condos, or whatever they may be, within the confines of the Quantico Corporate Center. To me, that makes perfect sense. I don't think this is going to put a giant burden on the schools. I don't see large families moving into this place. I think it's going to be more, or younger people who work there. And I, you know, I'm a believer in that this is the way we should go. I think we need to have a little bit of forward thinking here, and I think this is it. So that's what I've got to say.
Do you want to, we have a motion and a second on the floor for deferral. How long would you like to defer this?
I need at least a month.
A month? And the secondor agrees to that?
Yes, I agree to that.
Okay. And I just, well, right before we call for the vote, I want to say again, I know you're talking about the benefits of mixed use in apartments, but we are not really talking about that. We are just talking about creating a zoning category right now.
Mr. Chairman, actually, can we push it to after the budget? Would that be too much to ask? April, the first meeting in April, we're doing the budget public hearing, so a month and a half.
I will do whatever the board would like. It's more of a...
May 2nd? That'll work for me.
I would agree with Ms. Sellers.
All right, Gary, Mr. Snellins. All right, with all that said, and we have a motion and a second on the floor, let's cast our votes. And you may tally votes. And that passes 6 to 1. And we have two add-ons. Item 15, and I think, Mr. Thomas, I'll have you address the letter to the George Washington Foundation.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to offer to the board a resolution to authorize the county administrator to request that the George Washington Foundation dedicate the easements necessary for the Phase 6 of the Belmont to Ferry Farm Trail. And just as a point of clarification, all we are talking about in that phase is the part along Route 3. We're not talking about any other alignments yet. That's my motion.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and seconded, any discussion on the item?
Mr. Chairman, I believe since this would be new business, and it hasn't been visited to the board before...
Oh, we're going to have to, you know what, we need a motion to suspend...
Motion to suspend the bylaws.
Second.
We have a motion to suspend the bylaws, and it's seconded. Jack, what we're doing, what we're talking about is, okay, and it's just a, okay, if you know what it is, I won't repeat it. All in favor, please, or cash your votes, I'm sorry.
This is just for suspending.
For suspending. Tally the votes. Meg, I saw you push green, there you go. And it's unanimously, we have our bylaws suspended now, Mr.?
I'll offer my original motion again.
Second.
Okay, we are motion and seconded, cash your votes. Tally the votes. Oh my goodness, all right. And that passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And our very light, I don't know if we need to unsuspend our bylaws, we didn't say it was for one item, I don't know that it matters. Does it matter? Do they automatically unexpi...
Mr. Chairman, generally, we would like for the motion to be a little more specific, but I think it was understood it was suspending just to take up that one item.
Good, that's what we thought, too. And then our last item is not an action item, anyway. Senator Stewart is going to brief us on the Senate's, or maybe the General Assembly's, things that interest us.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank you. I tried to carry a bunch of bills for you all, and I thought maybe it was worthwhile to come back and just give you a brief report on that. I, yeah, I put in Senate Bill 1246, 47, 48, 49, and a couple others for you all. Real quickly, the bill that you put in dealing with the Comprehensive Services Act, actually, I got word from the county to strike that at some point, so after it was in the flow. So that was Senate Bill 1246. Senate Bill 1247 had to do with the regulation of wells, and I think you all were trying to get more authority than the Health Department. That bill, as I understood it, went down in the House, so I was told on the Senate side to strike that as well. And if you all have questions about these, please, you know, tell me, because these are bills I carried for you all, so I'm just trying to tell you what happened. One bright spot was the Lake Moonee bill. Well, we call it the Lake Moonee bill, Senate Bill 1248. And because of the reservoir and the property values going up, we actually put in, to Charles' request, a bill to allow a tax deferral program on that. And that passed both the Senate unanimously, and I believe the House unanimously. I think Mark Dudenham carried the House... I think Mark Dudenhofer carried the House bill on that one, and that one got through, and people understood it, and it was good. And so you can give those folks some relief. It's a shame you have to do that, but the Constitution says you have to tax people, and you have to do it fairly. And the only way you can give them a break is by getting the bill through, which that was done. You all asked for an income tax credit, a state tax credit for veterans, and then I also got word that the county wanted me to strike that, so I did. The constitutional amendment for real property tax relief for spouses of veterans, the original language the county wanted, I carried. I got it passed through the Senate. It got to the House side. There was another bill, constitutional amendment bill, being carried by Delegate Mieres. And typically, what the House and Senate do is they conform bills that may be similar. In this case, these bills weren't even similar. And I don't know why they did what they did, but that's what they did. In midstream, though, I think you all determined the language wasn't quite broad enough for what you wanted to do. So the bills ended up in conference. We were never able to get a conference report out that gave as much, gave it as broad as we needed to get it. And that's a complicated thing, because the, it's interesting, because I carried the bill for Stafford County, and of course, VACO and VML stood up and screamed about it. And I said, "Well, there's at least one county in the Commonwealth who supports this bill," because they asked me to carry it. But, because you all, obviously, you know, it hurts your budget and not the state's. But that bill, and so we have to wait two years, because you have to take a constitutional amendment a year before an election. You have to have an intervening election, and then you have to have another election, and then you have to take it to the voters for a referendum. So we'll have to wait until after the House of Delegates election, which is this year. What else? Oh, one really important thing. The budget amendment that you all asked me to put in regarding the CSA funding, that we've been working on now for about four years. Ms. Sellers has been real helpful on that. So we didn't get the language we wanted, but what Senate Finance Committee did, which I finally got on this year, what they did was create a commission, and we're going to work through that. I think we've gotten their attention, that there's a better way to do this, that we can do it and save money, and actually better educate special needs children at home in their own community. So it's taken us a long time. We didn't get exactly what we wanted this year, but I really think we're going to end up accomplishing something with that. And Delegate Cole, Delegate Cole, I didn't, I wasn't asked to carry this bill. I don't know, maybe that's why I got through. Got what we call the orphan dam bill, and we added the dam in Ms. Mauer's district to that fund under DCR, so hopefully, we can get some relief there. The governor's office has called me as late as a few days ago and wants some amendments. And based upon what I've seen, it's not going to hurt it at all, and the amendment's fine to the bill. And so there may be, if we can ever get any money for it. Other than that, I do not believe the General Assembly did anything to hurt your county. I really don't, and I try to pay attention to that. Now, Mr. Snellings probably knows something different, knows something different. We had a good budget done. We closed a $1.2 billion shortfall. We didn't raise any taxes, and we didn't raise any fees. And we actually were able to provide the state share of raises for teachers and deputy sheriffs, which will affect you all, and also considerable increases for the state police. So I felt really good about the budget, and generally, it was a good session. 45-day sessions are tough. They're really, really, really tough. I work from about 6:00 in the morning until 10:00 at night every day, and that's just the pace you have to keep, to keep up, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Snellings.
I guess you just heard that, too, didn't you? Senator, I want to thank you very much for what you did for the Lake Moonee bill. It means a great deal to a lot of people. They're very excited. They're waiting for the governor to sign, but it really does mean a lot, and I really do appreciate it.
Yes, sir. I was glad to do it. Glad we got something through.
Thank you for my orphan dam bill.
Ms. Sellers.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I want to add a thank you for the Children's Services Act, because we've taken it down there the past several years and really have fought hard for this. And we didn't ask to withdraw it. We found out we could put in a budget amendment. And so we did, and we went for the budget amendment instead, and that did ultimately pass. You're right, not the wording we wanted, because the wording we wanted was specific to us. So we have to share, and we now have to fight for that money, but we at least got it through.
We did an in-run. So we put the bill in, which was our front, and we dropped that and went around the end to try to get something done. But no, we're finally going to get somewhere on that. People are listening. You know, the day schools are $110,000 a year. In some cases, you have to go to residential schools. You have to be bused to those schools. And not every county can do it, but some counties, and you can do it regionally. And to be able to keep special needs children in their community and educate them is far superior to having to send them, you know, to Richmond, because that's typically where the schools are. So that's something that I'm delighted to work on. We're going to get there at some point.
We appreciate your hard work for us. You've always been like that, and thanks for coming to brief us. We didn't even ask you to do it, so thank you.
Glad to see you all. Thank you.
Good night. And with that, I think we can adjourn. Meeting adjourned.